PM here at Greenwood City Hall. I'm the mayor, Nick Kinslow, so I'm gonna, I call me the order. Our city clerk treasurer is out tonight. She would have recovered, was, is recovered from COVID. But today's her birthday, so her family planned a big to-do for her. So she's not here the first time that I can ever remember. Charlotte there is not here. So Tom's gonna call the roll for us to get it official and then we'll get going.
Casey Brown and Rob Patawara, Assistant Attorney.
Here.
Senator Terry.
Here.
Roger Ringwater.
Here.
Steve Tedder.
Here.
This is the court.
If everyone will please stand, we begin tonight with a prayer led by Chief Hogs and our pledge led by Jeff Turner.
Father, we praise your name. We thank you for the blessings of our city. We ask you to watch over our elected officials, give them wisdom, strength, allow them to make the decisions that's here in the community. We ask you to continue to bless our city. We ask special grace in our hearts and prayers with those in Texas, loved victims in Texas, their families, search, rescue crews. And we just ask for your blessings down there and continue to pray in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. At this time, I would ask the council to consider approval of events for the June 2nd, 2025 regular city council meeting. Mike Washington with President.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Roger Ringwater.
Yes.
Mr. Tedder.
Yes.
Thank you. Recognizations and acknowledgements. We have Ms. Arkansas right here in our own town, Ms. Kennedy Holland. If you're not aware of that, I'm not sure where you've been for the last month or so, but congratulations to hers. She's gonna be making a homecoming appearance. I don't have the date in front of me, but it's gonna be out at the, uh, the loft, right? I believe. And so that's gonna be a big deal. And congratulations to Kennedy. I know she's worked hard at that and will represent the state well. And if you need her, you can't call her mama anymore. You gotta go through the, through the folks that see, uh, Ms. Arkansas. So, uh, we recognize that he's not here tonight, but we had a freedom fest, as you know, on the fourth, and it was hugely successful, in my opinion, from when it started to the end. There's a lot of debate when it should have started, but when it started to the end, it was perfectly ran. Casey did a really good job on it. But a volunteer showed up that has for every, every year I can even think of, back when I was the parks director, never since I've been there. And it's never without any fanfare. He doesn't ask for anything. He doesn't wanna be known or seen, or he doesn't care to be seen. But he's just that guy. And when I tell you his name, you'll understand. It's Travis Hawkins. And this guy just shows up eight o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock in the morning and stays till midnight if you need him to, doing anything he can to make this thing work. And I just wanted to say it publicly that I appreciate him very much. Quite, quite the volunteer. Really good plumber. Little plumber there. So, uh, I don't know of any school, I mean, I know school's out. Anything, uh, you know Ms. Terry or about any successes.
Started fast dogs today, which is a little off-season summer workout.
Right.
We were those kids without heat.
Yeah, no doubt. And be thankful and thoughtful of those guys and prayers too. That's, that's a lot of heat out there. I know when I was a kid, we didn't do that and it was hard. I cannot imagine. Okay, um, moving along, we get to committee reports. I especially can't boys and girls club. I see Kenny's not here and I have not had a chance to go back and look at what was turned in late today, so you may or may not have a report. As always, if you don't see something that you need some answers to as far as these committees go, let me know or better yet, Danielle. Uh, this is our C A. Lisa had every intention of being here tonight. I encouraged her, uh, when we moved into the building and it's open. I think I announced that last week, month, did I? No. We're in the building. Hallelujah. Everything's working well. There's a little, few little things to work out, but the building's open and they're using it. They're very grateful for it. Lisa was gonna come tonight. Her husband is in the hospital and been put on ventilator, so for her and our family. But the senior citizen center, they all are enjoying it very, very much. Parks Commission, uh, don't see anybody here from it, but if you've got questions, let me know or waste word commission. Sorry. Oh, I thought you said something. Anyway, if you need anything updated, let me know. Citizen form, I didn't get the clipboard. Hunter, would you grab that or chief? Thank you very much. I know we have some guests here tonight. When, with council's permission, I'm gonna move these gentlemen up several notches so they can get back on the road. One, if you don't get on the road, you'll have to stay with in-laws. And we don't want that here in Greenwood. And the other gentleman's coming out fable, so we'll try to get you guys back in time. We may not. Uh, so I have one citizen who signed up tonight, Mr. Raymond Kennedy.
I think you mentioned the restroom.
Oh, well, great. We'll, we'll, uh... Do what? Oh, I got bad dad jokes I could tell you, but that probably wouldn't go over. Agenda additions. Let's just go on to that and when, when Mr. Kennedy comes out, we'll, we'll visit with him. We had, uh, I know nobody likes us here, but we've got one that was added. I'm calling it number nine, although the numbers, we're gonna leave the numbers alone, but we actually have ten. I'm calling it number nine. And it's the, I'm calling it the trail, uh, tunnel update from R dot. This is on the, on the request from, to see the cost to entertain the cost for the, over there on Main Street connection. Mr. Kennedy, you're up, sir. If you wanna come on up to microphone.
Okay.
Council approval, we'll add that on the agenda. Mr. Kennedy, if you will tell us your name and address and you've got five minutes to talk to it.
Okay. My name is Raymond Kennedy. My address is 102 Blackfoot Circle in Greenwood. We have a problem in our city. And it has to do with people's not cleaning their yards. But I've also, and I've had, uh, raccoons, hornbillows, snakes and everything come through my backyard fence. Because my neighbor does not wanna cut their backyard. And I have looked in, in our ordinance we got, and in the ordinance, it does not cover anything making anybody cut their backyard. If they border somebody. Now, it, it does say something in there about animals coming through, you know, and stuff like that. We need to amend that ordinance for making people cut their backyards. You gotta look at their backyard as you're their neighbor. But who wants to have snakes and everything come through? It's unsightly. And there, it's, it's all through the city of Greenwood. I know there are about three or four in Greenwood West. There's one that, uh, that's up for rent on Denver Street. The grass hasn't been cut because there's nobody living here. But we need to have amendments to put into this ordinance where the backyards are required to be cut too. It's a safety hazard. Saying you had kid or whatever in the backyard and animal comes through and tax that kid or snake or whatever. You know, it's not good for anybody. It's not good for the city of Greenwood. It's, we don't have a code enforcer. And in the bill itself, it doesn't tell what kind of punishment the person that's committing the violation. We need to look and put an amount of what that citation would be if they don't wanna fulfill the obligation after they've been given a warning. I've talked with the mayor. He's came over and he's looked at the one yard they don't talk to him about. And it's just unsightly and dangerous. I've got a dog that I don't really, sometime, uh, I'm afraid to let him out in the backyard because I don't know what's gonna come through that fence. And we've got, uh, neighbors on each side of us, got young kids. So I'm hoping with council, they'll do something looking at ordinance and do amendment to it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any comments or questions, counsel?
I don't know if they weren't tried off hand, but I'm just curious if it's yard or just front yard. I would assume it's city yard.
Yeah, it, uh, it does, it does say front yard. Hunter's more at the point than I have been in a while. I gave a copy of Mr. Kennedy. We've always, I say always, it's been years, certainly since I've been in there and even before that I know of, we addressed front yard. One, because it's viewable to the public and all that. And we, we say a little about backyard. There's some, there's, they're on occasion. I believe it says to my discretion a little bit in there too.
Yeah.
And the unsightly part and the unsafe and the healthy. And, and I can certainly testify to Mr. Kennedy's complaint. I, I did go over there as I, as I needed to. We can, we can see that back, a lot of times we look at it too as visible from the front. And it is, not a lot, not complete, but somewhat more than some yards, but it's pretty bad. So I advise Mr. Kennedy to come, voice his opinion as far as reading, adding to. I know Hunter worked, this is one you worked on for a long time, I think, didn't it? No. So it probably needs some tweaking. There are certain yards in Greenwood, everywhere I'm sure, that almost become more of a front, as much a front yard as a backyard. So, I mean, yeah.
So another sub reason, if you will, for this ordinance of this nature is for fire. When they're fighting a house fire, your yard's that tall.
That's right.
And there's a marine sort of pools and bikes in the yard and a trip over.
A lot of times these yard, and not this one, I don't think they have a pool.
Uh, they've got a little dicky titty pole, but they've had, uh, a barbecue pit out there in the backyard. Just like Tim was saying, that, you know, a farmer come out there in the backyard. He don't know nothing about it because he can't see it.
And I'm trying to profile it. A lot of times these yards that are this bad, we're often not as above ground pool that hasn't been attended to in years or so. There's mosquitoes and that's, I don't think this one does not, I guess.
No.
The trash, that could be a fire hazard. Oh, absolutely. Some are gonna go and dry as well. Absolutely. And if they're not knowing it, they're not apt to know it in any extent. So I told Mr. Kennedy, we've got the address already, I believe. I know Danielle has already sent a letter. I told him not to expect anything overnight because people don't react overnight to things like this. And if it's a rent house, this letter goes to the property owner who may be out of state and then either it doesn't come back to.
That takes a long process.
So, and, and this, I do, and I didn't have him come down for this, but we, I did explain to him, we don't currently have a code enforcement officer. We have Danielle who's sending out over a hundred letters. We've got that in me. I don't have any phone calls, but so when we, hopefully we'll get back to that, Mr. Kennedy, where that person, he or she can be more on top of it and we won't let it get this way. But I, I would agree that the ordinance itself needs some tweaking.
Some looking at the addition. On the, not just the grass, but the other, other stuff.
Oh, yeah. The grass is, is a tiny part of code enforcement and it's, yeah. But thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I promise you, we will look into it and we'll have a discussion in the department at meetings too and see if we can't bring something back to council to maybe add to this ordinance that you suggested.
Thank you all.
This, sir. This is the ordinance that we discussed last month with the county.
The municipal.
It, it, yeah. Which, by the way, I think that's been, I had a lady thanked me for taking care of that the other day. I wasn't sure I did, but I said, you're welcome. So I guess the gentleman decided not to plan it. And I asked Mr. Reynolds, who is a, that captain of tree guy and all that. And I think he went and visited with him and explained to him how basic that was. And I guess he decided not to do it, so. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right, did anybody else sign up? I don't think we have anybody else that wants, needs to speak or wanted to. Financial, we'll go right to the financial report. Mr. Tom slash Charlotte.
So I wasn't here last city council meeting to give you a report and I heard it was the shortest council meeting this year.
That's correct.
So I'm not conferring that it's me that makes it go the one talking. But we do have a little bit more like the, uh, the report that we're gonna do today. It's gonna be team tagged by myself and Mr. Purvis. And I'll give you the history as to why. In February, as you know, this up at the top here, the same period, February or February of a year ago, we looked at a 22.69% decrease or decline months, month over same month from the year ago. That brought our cumulative city sales and use tax down to 12.52%. And I said, we need to do a deep dive into that because I don't know really what generated that. Initially, you would think retail sales dropped and that's what we kind of threw around. But it prompted a thought in Mr. Purvis's mind about, we need to get to the bottom of that. We did, did need to do a deep dive. So I'm gonna turn it over to Bob and he's gonna explain to you what was discovered as a result of this deep dive. And then I'm gonna show you the numbers as it gets corrected based on the information he's gonna provide.
I'm gonna start with Kenny. Learned a lesson a long, long time ago.
I thought you were gonna say Adam and Eve, I'm sorry.
First time I ever coached football. I was coerced into coaching T-ball like every T-ball coach did. But it was in, got all my kids there for the first practice, four and five-year-olds. They all had their bats and a ball and their gloves and their helmets. And they were ready to go and I was scared down against this. I was standing on the base, everybody come here in line. Now, once you take turns and once you run to first base, pass a little hand. Coach, what's a base? Start with Kenny. That was my lesson. After we saw that, we said we related something. My old manager used to say the name of game is information. One of the most wins. We kinda put together a team effort. The mayor was kinda driving the team. Tom was the brain, I was the fuel. But I've worked with sales taxes for 40 years, so I kinda know some terminology and questions to ask. When it's over down 23%, that's catastrophic. But Tom always gives us a lot of information, probably sometimes with a day more than me. Two things he gave us that month were surrounding cities, you know, about flat mostly for that month. But really, one way or the other, very good tragically. Our restaurants, which collectively are a good-sized chunk of retail, they were about flat. So what happened? We didn't have disasters, no storm, flood, didn't lose any big businesses. We looked at internet sales and nationally, internet sales for this past Christmas season were up and continuing to grow. So it just mystery got deeper. So I asked the mayor permission to go around and talk to some of our businesses. And I had these confidential conversations with our martial retailers. And what they told me was their business was up. Over 11. In most cases, it was up in December. We also thought that we would see some boost from the sales of materials on the bypass. We don't buy millions of dollars on steel, dirt, rock. We thought our sales taxes would come up a little bit. We need to get something from finance administration of what was happening because all we get is a check or a deposit actually from them every month. We don't really know what it's from, what it is. So the mayor approved me, called me Jonathan. This is where it turned out to be very valuable to have a senior legislator who knows everybody and has good relationship with everybody. They knew who to call and because these seniorities, they gotta take this question seriously. So immediately I got a call back from gentleman department of finance administration. I had asked three questions, I said in writing to them. One, is the sales of the dirt property on all that subject to sales tax, subject to local sales tax? Two, is it being taxed as point of delivery, which is agreed with? And three, what, what actually happened in December? Well, question one, yes, subject to city sales tax. Question two, best they could tell, it was being subject to the right, right taxation made, made place, but I've done audit, but they said it was. Number three, the answer was local sales tax cap rebate. Local sales tax, city sales tax, subject to a maximum of $25. You provide a new car, base day sales tax, $25 city sales tax. Buy the materials for a house, all you pay is $25 per purchase. Doesn't matter if you spent a thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars. $25 local sales tax, that's the maximum on any transaction, any single transaction. But here's what happens. The state always gets their money. So the seller, if he sells you a hundred thousand dollar Jeep Grand Wagoneer, you're gonna charge a thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars worth of building materials. He's gotta send a thousand dollars to the state, to charge it to you. I'm sorry, I said that wrong. He has to pay a full amount to the state. The state then sends it to the city. And then the seller has 12 months to submit documentation that say, I sent in more city sales tax than I collected. I sold a hundred thousand dollar load of concrete and I want $25. I get $975 back on that. And so the state sends him his rebate and pulls it out of the city's next deposit. Most months, it's wash, three to six thousand dollars is what we see. Mostly probably from sales of material, that sort of thing. Most months, three to six thousand dollars in and out. So we never know it. But it fits. Partly probably by design, partly by coincidence, the major sellers of the materials on the bypass applied for most of their rebate and it was pulled out in December. Hundred and, probably a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, what came out. For little Greenwood, that's a chunk of money. We're not feeling if it didn't go about this. Talk to several of the mayors, didn't go about it. And just gonna cause some, some running around and gnashing of teeth. It was, it was coincidence to some extent, but they all just waited the end of the year to apply for it, probably, I don't remember whenever it came. Now, this is good news. Now we know how to plan. We discovered a report that's available that Tom's now getting that shows how much in and out on these figures and a couple of other things we didn't know about. We got to use the money all year for interest free, so there's some value in that. Another good thing is that cap on materials like that does not apply to the county sales tax. So county sales tax being charged on all these amazing sales and we'll get our share of that. Not everybody files for the rebate. But give me a toy with it. I don't know why, but something, just don't bother to file for rebate. So all that money we get to keep. What we do know now is that our cash basis accounting took a hit, but our local economy didn't. And really, our income both through our businesses and to the city was okay for the year. It just, if it all hit $10,000 every month all year long, whatever it says, it'd go in, come out, we would still be sort of at the same levels that we had. After I went and talked to our realtors, our retailers, I said, I'm gonna go and do this twice a year. Cause it did give us some pretty good information we could look at and go, okay. So I started this year and got all of it. What I've gotten so far is you start out slow from retailers. And in the last month or so, it's gotten where it's about to pop back up the last year, which dovetails with what Tom is seeing and what we're seeing in our, in the county of the city. We also learned that if we pay local sales tax on something we buy somewhere and Tom thinks that at the time or two we have, we can apply for that rebate. So if we bought a piece of equipment or something like that and bent it up and the seller charged us the sales tax, we've gotta receive it shortly. We probably wouldn't get that money back ourselves. So now we know what to look at. We've got, we've got the numbers. I have also asked, uh, the director of the highway department if there is a report that they generate on a monthly basis that shows how much is spent on a project. And he said, you weren't sure, you were gonna find out if they had a such a vehicle that we could see and we could say, okay, we gotta count on $10,000 that should come out at some point in the next few months, again, for planning. But it's gonna let us know what we're dealing with and plan for it and not have surprises. Not do like some of the other cities. Some of the other cities, no fad, it's one city that do have a fad, it got hit with $12 million. Even though they planned for it, they planned wrong. Questions, did it make sense?
Yes and no. Was the construction just an anomaly this time around because?
Yeah, you know, that's a 60-bit, they're in on a project. We don't know exactly, but you can probably figure around half of it there. And so if you just said, we took a million dollar a month all last year, that is now up to 100, 120 million dollars, 120,000 dollars. So that would, that would account for, and that does seem to account for, is that, that anomaly. We know it's gonna happen again this year. What we don't know is will they all file for it again at one time? Or have they been filing for it month to month as it's gone on now? Maybe they all filed for it at the end of the year, but it was first year of a project. We, we don't know. But some of the reports Tom's getting now, let him look at that so that he can make a little bit better forecasts of where we're going.
Now, is this, is this a recent development or just brought to the surface because of?
It's brought to the surface because it's been the policy for, the last thing it addressed it like with the 2008 inflation. And that was the county end of it, but beyond that, it's been fixed. What happened when the state 40 years ago passed the law to allow cities to collect a sales tax? There was a lot of objection from car builders and building materials, you know, like that. Everybody just move out down by their stuff and I'll go out of business. And so that's why the cap of $25 was put on there. Because you don't wanna go to the next county over to buy a car, say, boy, it's a buck. That's where it came from. So we've got a tool now, I think it's a good tool. I'll go and show some numbers that he put together. And we've learned a few things about how to go and get more information along. And we've got a good contact if he had made that too.
I'll stick you up. Okay. Let's take what you learn and let's apply it to the financials. Not only for this month, but I've got some other information. By the way, the report that he's talking about is the NAI CS report that shows the amounts for both rebates and audits. And of course, he didn't address audits, but that's another magnetism. Did you wanna speak on the audit part?
Only in that, there was a term we didn't recognize. And it says that if they audit and see that somebody didn't pay enough or that we didn't get enough, they will send us a check. Or vice versa, if somebody made too much or they credited too much, if they could have told them another lie, it's not huge, Larry. It's less than 100%.
But it is another factor. There's two factors. There's the rebate and then there's the audit. So going away from the February, let's look at the current period. This is June's same period over. If you look at the very top, it's 1.58% positive. So our trend, like we, he mentioned, is going in the correct direction. It's just not doing as, quite as robustly as we would like to try to overcome that $115,000 take back. But if you'll notice down at the bottom, the cumulative is going in the right direction. Now, it's down 6.1%. It's actually nine, just under 10% if you look at the fact that we've led to a 3% growth. But that's before we factored in what potentially was. And the only, the only reason that this became a big issue is anytime the city embarks on or has going on, a major project in the city could be the Village East or whatever it is on Area 201 or what is, whatever that's called, or whatever we're referring to it. A lot of that can be factored into where the rebates will come into being because they pile up the materials. And then you have sidewalk project also happened, 2023. A lot of concrete is bought and put into that. And so I'm gonna show you the actual historical graph on this from 22 to 25. And so I'm going to show you the actual historical graph on this from twenty-two to twenty-five. So you can see exactly what the rebates were doing. And like he says, because it was comparable, we had roughly the same going in, the same going out every month. So it didn't factor in because we were basing our letters on cash basis. But what we weren't factoring in was large projects such as this road project and some of the other developments that we have. And of course, anytime you do like the sidewalk project, that's going to give you an initial pickup and subsequently they'll be a take back. So that's your city, but I wanted you to know not to get the hopes up. Because if we were going to look at probabilities, the current average for the first six months of the year was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. If you take all of the amounts that amassed that one point seven million, that's how much we would have averaged per month. The remaining six months of twenty twenty-four is three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars per month on average. In order for us to make budgets of the three percent growth, we would have to average over the next six months, three hundred and fifty-six thousand per month. That is a less than one percent probability of doing. We have not ever in last year had any month greater than the three hundred and fifty-six thousand at all, not even close. So it's highly unlikely, not probable that we would make budget. So let's look at the probability of at least breaking even. So average dispersment or distribution to us, obtain a zero growth would be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand per month for the next six months. We've only achieved that once in November of twenty-four, looking historically, that was three hundred and fifty-three thousand. So the probability is less than twenty percent. It's, if you have a slide that TV or that movie where it says, so you're saying there's a chance, right? So you're saying it's possible. Yeah, you can look at the positive side of that, I'm sure. But I'm just saying, don't necessarily get your hopes up. That's kind of where I'm, how I project whether or not we're going to meet budget or not. We're looking at what we need in order to make budget. And we're going to look at the current distributions for June compared to what would be calculated as the taxable sales. This is on a cash basis, this is where the flaw was. If you don't factor in the rebates and the audit, you're coming up with numbers that do not accurately represent the retail sales for that same period of time. So when you look at us, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand June of twenty-four, three hundred and forty-two, that's where the one point five eight percent comes in. On a cash basis, that's what we got, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand in twenty-four, here's your check. Three hundred and forty-two thousand, here's your check for twenty-five. So that increase there is correct on a cash basis. When you look at the retail sales, you'd have to say this is on a cash basis. And that would have been a growth or an impact of about two hundred and sixty-five thousand. That's not necessarily true, depending on the impact of the rebates. But when you look up at the line in Fort Smith, and you see a sixteen million dollar hit on a cash basis and an almost seven percent down. It was no wonder that Fort Smith, from the article from Talk Business and Politics, after we had already known about this, had a headline saying, Fort Smith officials surprised by drop in sales tax revenue. And that they were going to go to talk with the D F A about what's wrong with those numbers, because they were anticipating an increase. We were one step ahead of it based on the fact that our number hit June, I mean, in February. And Bob started getting wheels turning and we needed, we knew we needed to go do a deep dive. So we promised it and we got to the bottom of it. Now I'm going to show you some of what the rebates did. So the numbers that I can get as far back as I can go is March, March of twenty twenty-two. But here's the full twenty-three, the full twenty-four, and the full twenty-five. And in twenty-three, you're going to see February and March, right around there is when there'll be kind of like a big pickup or a big hit. You saw that in the last three years. Those are fiscal year end entities that file for the rebates at the end of December thirty-first fiscal year. And you have noticed in August of twenty-four, a lot of this happened during the beginning phases of some of the vendors that supplied for the road project, but it also could be, this ten thousand were anticipated, were probably thinking that was a sidewalk. But this would be your August and even in some part of October, they could be doing quarterly submissions, which this would be most likely. The August would be a June filing, because you usually get your information back or your distributions back in a two month period after you submit. So if you submitted as a June thirtieth, you're in, you're going to expect to see that pickup or that bump in the month of August. So this is the numbers, you went, you went from a total rebates of thirty-five thousand for the year of twenty-two, less the two months, maybe not significant. Fifty-five thousand in twenty-three, ninety-one thousand in twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-seven so far for the year this year. So that's a one point two seven, one point five six, two point four, now it's eight point nine one percent.
And it sounds like we don't have really any way to predict it.
We can get a little better at, when we look at some of the raw averages, so I know, I can calculate what I'm anticipating the remainders. If we can get some numbers about the remainders or the costs. But I can look at these reports and know what, what manufacturers or what industries or what codes are generating those rebates. Because not all of them are generating rebates.
You'd almost have to look at the number of transactions rather than the dollar amount, so I think it's.
But if we factored in at least a percentage while we have major construction and major projects going on, we know, don't get overzealous in what our budget is going to be based on, we know now there's going to be some rebate. And I, what is that, over, over, under promise and over deliver? What we kind of want, we would like it to be, we got a little more aggressive in our approach and we bettered that by receiving more than what we're doing now and receiving less. So we just know now that we have to consider that and we just started doing the budget for this year. And we have to kind of look at what that trend is going to be. And I'm really interested in August, because I know we've got at least two more years of the project on the road. Heavy, hot and heavy, as far as work is concerned, so we'll see. If there's going to be a pickup in a large hit in August, we'll know that on next month's numbers. So that's what happened on the rebate side. Now, when you go and look at how that panned out, this is a graphical depiction of it from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. And you see again the peaks which are coming about fiscal year end, take backs on the rebates through the distribution. But when you look at twenty-five, that's what happened. We kind of narrowed it down because what we're seeing a lot of is, it's in the, it's in the industries that support the road project. So we came to that conclusion rather quickly, so. As far as the audits are concerned, these numbers are a lot smaller, they're less than one percent. You'll see that sometimes it goes in our favor and sometimes it doesn't. So the average audit for twenty twenty-two generated a pickup for us, but then you'll see that it started the year with a nine thousand dollar takeback on the audit side, which was a distribution back to, from what he was saying, in vendors or suppliers that got more money back from an audit. As far as the amounts though, it's immaterial to the total for, for us, our setting, based on the total C S U T distributions to us. So two thousand on an average per month for twenty-five, we just know that that's a factor for us. So then I go back to this one and I said, Fort Smith, let's look at Fort Smith, just for the heck of that. Because we, we saw this article come out and I said, well, I'm going to go find out what's behind their numbers. So Fort Smith officials were surprised, these are the, right out of that article. Administration's a bit worried, confused by the lower than anticipated sales tax revenue and they may plan to seek more information from state officials. And it said, based upon the news from the state, we were expecting an increase in the May twenty-four, but that didn't happen. Okay, and he says that they intend to visit with Department of Finance and Administration about the report, that's right out of that article. So let's look at it. The distributed C S U T on a cash basis was a decrease of six point nine percent. And it would have been a decrease of that sixteen million on retail sales calculated based on two percent divided, this number divided by two percent. Is where we're coming up with the retail sales that would have generated that. However, if you look now at the bottom, the rebate for the month of April, which generated the distribution for June, was two hundred and fifty-four thousand, it's right at quarter of a million dollars. But their audit adjustment was also two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So they took almost a half a million dollar hit or recoupment, if you will. So when you factor that back, in other words, take the noise out, add that back to the distribution, just come up with what the real taxable sales were before the impact of the rebates, you're looking at a growth, just about what they anticipated, a small growth of point four three percent. And that would have been a pickup in their taxable retail sales. So that's telling us that the, the community is still spending. They're not on a decline or a downward trend on the retail sales spending habit. So let's look at the city of Greenwood. So there's Greenwood's, we had a, for the month of April, or just what's your distributed impacted us in the June distribution? We had an audit adjustment of a thousand thirteen and eighty-nine dollars in rebates. So you see, that really would have been not even a blip to us looking at the cash basis if that didn't happen in February. If what happened didn't happen. So you add that back and it does decrease us a little bit because we had a larger impact in twenty-four than what we knew about. So that one point six nine percent on a actual retail sales basis was a growth of point six three. It's kind of in line with what Fort Smith's doing. Everybody's about the same in the way the spending habits are going on within the major cities within Sebastian County. So that's what those numbers are showing.
Tom?
Yes?
Want to have one more thing we talked about, go back to that slide.
Which one?
Do you know here?
It is.
There, we're showing eighty-nine dollars for June.
Yeah.
Well, we know good and well, they bought more than eighty-nine hundred dollars worth of rock and steel and cement that month on the project. So that's part of what we're looking at to tell us there's going to be a bigger rebate coming out, like Tom said, probably in August.
Right. We're, we're watching what they're doing and that's about the only way we can visually see what's being added every day. And there's a lot of asphalt going down now too. So once we see all that, we know they're purchasing it, they didn't stockpile it in the past. So we're kind of anticipating. So let's go back to January, this would have been January's, November's sales around the holiday time. Instead of that down one point four one, which I reported in January on a cash basis, you add the rebate and the audit back, which is fourteen thousand five. It, we really add a percent change of a one point eight five percent. And it would have been that as far as the taxable sales is concerned. So the taxable sales actually increased in the month of November. And then when you go and look at, oops, when you look at December. In February, let's see now, which was December's taxable sales. That's where the twenty-two came in, but when you factor in the rebate and audit, it's really a growth of seven point five seven percent. Which was, which would have been very good for the center of the, that would have been fabulous for the month of June. And that goes along with what he was being told by the retailer saying that we have a good December. There it is. And that seven point five percent factored into, instead of a decline of four point two million dollars in retail sales, taxable sales, the taxable sales actually went up one and a half.
So when we, when we look at our city sales tax then, should we not, maybe as we're looking at it during the year, figure out some sort of percentage and say, less anticipated audit rebate?
Are you done on budget?
Yeah.
Or when I reported?
Well, you know, if you're trying to compare apples to apples and show whether sales are up or down, you have to somehow remove that effect. And you could have just say, the past few years, it's been one percent, three percent annually. And then use a factor like that.
I won't need to use a factor when I'm reporting it to you. Because these numbers are real time. You know, when I did the sales distribution, I actually did this report too. So I can go back and I have the history now, I've already captured that. So I can go and readjust twenty-fours to twenty-fives and I can show you what we got as far as a cash. You're going to get this right here every time. You're going to see what was our cash basis distribution and what was the retail sales basis. So you'll see them both.
And again, this twenty-five dollars, you're saying that at a certain point, it's just twenty-five dollars per transactions?
Twenty-five hundred in sale now, twenty-five dollars is the tax portion.
Okay. And above that, if you're above the twenty-five hundred, it's still twenty-five dollars?
It's still twenty-five dollars in tax.
Right.
So these numbers of retail sales, no matter how positive they are, for the city sales in these tax, that's actually conservatively low. Because all of what that hundred and fifteen thousand, it was the amount of tax that was redistributed back, that was not taxed to us. So that's not factored in this, I'm taking divided by, that number divided by two percent, whatever numbers distributed.
Now, if you're trying to, I know all this is pretty sunshine, a lot of good looking black numbers, but ultimately, we're still dealing with red numbers.
Did you get there? Wait.
Before we start trying to.
Did you get?
Well, I just, I've, I've been, this is not my first rodeo, but getting set up, hold up my rear.
Well, let me show you, I was going to go right there, just to show you, now that I got your hopes up, we'll be dashing a little bit, because that's my job, all right? So what I wanted to show you is cumulative for the year for Greenwood. Just, these are the numbers, so this is the distributed cash basis. Now, it's six point seven two, I already showed you that, and that was an impact of about seven point three million in a predictive taxable sales, not exact science. But when you adjust for audits and rebates, we have a hundred thirty-seven thousand, that's two point one million in cumulative distribution if we factored out the noise. And that's still a percent decrease of two point two nine percent for the year. And that's factoring out the amount of the, adding it back in, in essence, rebate and audit. So for the year, even with that, we're still down two point two nine percent. And when you go to the growth of point six three, which I already showed you for this month, for the month that we just got this full June distribution, you got to figure that if the sales volume is level, that just inflation is going to increase your amount of your distribution. But that I can tell you that just the rate of inflation is greater than point six three percent right now. So that would have told you right there that that volume level of sales is not growing as rapidly, it's slowed down.
Eight minus two, point two nine, is that year over year cumulative?
That's cumulative for this year, this whole thing is cumulative, from January to now, it's distribution. So there it is on the graph, if you looked at twenty-four, twenty-four, is this orange line? You say we started off the year low, we were for the first two months taxable sales trend, this is the taxable sales trend. Was up, then it drops, and then it's a little bit up now, so it is trending a little bit up for the last couple of months. However, if you look at the difference between twenty-four and twenty-five, it's down to two point nine percent, coinciding with the, now that's up there. All right, so let's go to the county side, this is the cash basis on the county side. Now, we're not dealing with rebates and audits as far as the numbers are concerned, and this is just what we get. June over same period was down five point four nine percent, but that adversely impacted our zero growth budget. We're down one point seven one percent for the cumulative period of January through June. So that, that is going in the wrong direction and, yeah. If you looked at taxable sales, which is not subject to the rebates, you take the number by one percent and you're looking at fifteen thousand, fifteen million decline in taxable sales from the distributable amount. That was done between June of twenty-four's distribution and June of twenty-five's. And that's our eleven thousand seven ninety-eight decline for the city of Greenwood. Because we share in share alike at a seven point four five percent. Well, the only way to increase this amount that we get or lose would be if the city sends this number because it's this number to this, grows at a greater rate than during the year. So now we're going to the Sebastian County taxable sales trend, it is negative. And then you look at the combined sales, this is both county and city together on a cash basis, we're down four point seven percent, both county and city tax. We're down 4.7%, both county and city tax. Arkansas just said on a news release that said they ended their fiscal year, which was June 30th of '25, with a 367.9 million dollar surplus, and that their revenue was down 4.5%. And they also, in that article, they said that sales tax revenue was up 1.4%. So what factored into this was income tax. That's what dropped that, income tax and the other taxes, like alcohol sales and things like that, alcohol tax, various supplements. But the retail sales tax was actually up. And now, as I've said, I told you that for the year cumulative distribution, factoring out rebate, we're down 2.29%. So we're kind of still, it goes with what you were saying. So it's not all roses yet, but at least we have a better handle on what's going on.
But you can see, I mean, you see by the growth in the, in the market for housing in Portsmouth, that that census is about to change, not in our favor. And we're going to get some growth, but our, the housing that's going on in Portsmouth is just amazing. So here, the percentage is going to go up.
We're about halfway through the census period right now. The projected census is just slightly over 10,000 for us right now. But it's 10,300. Yeah, the census bureau is projecting of...
Have you seen the projection for Portsmouth?
No. No, I just looked at ours.
Well, that's a long way to do something, $25 flat. I mean, if...
That's your legislature.
I know. That is, that's not part of the budget, because if you have a big project coming up, and there are going to be big expenditures, it's going to kill you. It helps you, but it kills you.
Depends on if you have a big project in your area. Because we never even heard high or air of this $25 rebate bill for 18 years, I would say. It was the first time we had a big multi-million dollar construction.
If you add it as a percentage, even a very low percentage, that worked out to that $25, then when you did a big project like this, you would get a bigger percentage of it. And, or you could get actual more dollars, and there'd be less rebate.
Right.
But if, when you have a big project like this, you have to really look ahead and say, this is going to kill us.
Well, assuming you don't factor it in.
Yeah.
It's like...
It's like getting a big tax...
It's like not holding enough out of your paycheck to pay it on. Overdue them.
I just want to say, you've got to have to be paying it to IRS that may be there.
Yeah.
So splash pad, all of that.
The roads.
Roads.
Any of that, that would take... All right. So there's your advertising and promotions. Now, again, we talked about that briefly, and that they're a good indicator of closer to the actual distribution because in July, you're supposed to be getting June's taxes because they have the 30 days from the end of the reporting period to submit those one for, that 1% prepared food sales tax. If you see the trend all the months, January, February, March, we're down 15.2% month over same period for June. Our cumulative is going in the wrong direction. We're at 12.34%. They budgeted four, and that's their budget. They, they're the people in that industry, and that's what they told me to put in the budget, and I'm not going to budget that. I'm going to say, sure. We're, if you factor that in, it's 16.34% down. And that's the money that's distributed for defense of the city. Keep that in mind. Okay? So there's your advertising and promotion trend. It's all mashed up, so I'm going to take it and look at this one. This is June's totals for each of the year, 18, 19, 20, all the way to '25. So you see the historical of what June used to do, and then starting after '24, we started on a downward trend for the month of June. Okay, now, there's several factors in that. One is, is it that their sales are down? Because inflation, you're, you're reading in social media about people raising their prices, and they're not going to, if they can beat it at home, then they're going to beat it at home, and they're not going to go out as much. That could be a factor, because there's a price point there, and you kind of say, I'm not, I'm going to go and worry, and I'm going to go rest. But then the other is, it's, this is their payments to us. This is a cash basis here. So I'm only showing you the numbers of who's paid. So as payments get delayed, that delayed payment is causing some cash flow issues with what AMP has to distribute as far as grants.
I don't guess it's all color inside with our little food truck courts. Got any kind of thing to do with it, does it?
I am not the finance person for any of it. I can tell you this, because that's what I see. But as far as the detail about who's doing what, that comes from the AMP Commission and Charles. She's the, I'm the source actually. She has the list.
So I'm just talking about sales tax in general, city sales tax campaign. That just goes strictly to AMP, out of those food truck area? They're supposed to be paying.
Sales and use tax, but this is AMP. This is that 1% on prepared foods, food trucks, subjects of that. So I don't know whether they're paying that, that prepared food tax or not. I know that there's some of the payers were delayed, they're a couple of months behind. And I know there's a penalty provision that is not being applied.
As orders and written more.
Right, as our burden one, yes. Oh, I was referring to the sales, but likely they're leaving.
Tim, I don't know if I answered your question, might as well. I'm sorry, Tim. Did I say one? I am sorry. To my knowledge, and I said on the AMP, I'm not through the guy either, but I said on the AMP, to my knowledge, from what I've seen, what I've seen so far, the structure of it, and it's based on honesty and more of a W collective, right? So it seems to be, this is just a stretch, maybe a little easier to collect from a collective group out there than it is if they were all over town. So I don't think it's detrimental to the collection, it's just the nature of the beast.
Well, I just, I'm not for mayor with, with, obviously running a business, so I, it just, I mean, there are all those folks aware, they've got to pay city sales tax and AMP tax.
They are. Yeah, when they come in to get their permits or their licenses, that's all.
Their business license.
And I mean, it's even, it's not just the food truck people, but that thing's obviously takes on a lot of money, it's always cool when it's open. And that's obviously taken away from our breaking border dollars that were being shown here. So just the fact that its origin is, is looking, it started about 100% and we're seeing all this go down, I just was wondering, Chris.
18 through '25 of the first six months is what you're looking at now. So you're seeing the decline in '25. So there's a little bit of impact there. If that's wrong for the city, we go in the last two things, and then we move on with the agenda. We had a balance of the year, 17 million, we're down 16, 297, we're now 4.36%, which is not bad, because at this point, you were projecting to be down way more significant than that. Most of that has to do with this number down here on the capital expense side. We've spent on a budget of $15.5 million, 2.2 million, which is a 14.61% duty in some portion. That does include street, the searchers projects, and buzzer resolutions that you guys have approved of as capital. So that's why that's only dealing with that much.
Do you have any, any reference number to that sales tax provision that caps at $25?
I have the actual whole thing.
And that was, that was very good work, Tom and Bob. That's cool.
Yeah, who knew Bob had that in him? When Bob, I'll tell you, when Bob came to my office with this information, I just kind of, oh, really? Is that even, is that even possible? He should, he, I went directly to Tom, he had already shared it, they had already shared it. And so they worked hard to get it to us, and I still, it's like, is that really, as you said, Councilman Terry, well, you know, we didn't know it. So, pretty interesting. And after all, after every one of these discussions with Tom, there will be a test at the end of the night, maybe, and against the background here. Hope you were taking notes. Thank you, Bob. That's my way of saying thank you very much for your due diligence and reporting with Tom, because I know that's tough, too. But that's wonderful information to add. It's not wonderful news necessarily, but it's, the plan for it is key.
It's a positive.
Yeah, and a little bit of, little bit of silver in there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
So thank you very much. Agenda additions, we've already done. We added one. We're going to get through all this real quick, gentlemen, and I promise you, then we'll hopefully get up here and get you on your way. First one is position fulfillment for code enforcement. What is a great segue into asking for more money for a code enforcement officer after that?
That's why I was...
I know. Yeah, absolutely. And I'm not asking you tonight to pass anything to get it done. I just want to keep you updated on things as we move along. Again, I don't have a whole lot of information on abandoned vehicles, because we don't have, we don't have anybody doing abandoned vehicles or structure as it is right now. I know it's been suggested that we have people that can do multiple jobs. I'm concerned, Danielle's not here tonight, but she, along with her two jobs as HR Director and my assistant, which keeps her busy on both ends of the spectrum, she is now to task to issue letters to citizens in the city, as Mr. Kennedy pointed out the need for that. And these, this is just one. Well over a hundred of those letters have gone out, of course, multiple phone calls that we get every day. And a lot of times, when we get a call for other things, and I just say to, or I had Danielle instructed to say to them, listen, call your councilman, let him know, your third year board, I mean, that's, that's the way this is supposed to work anyway. Let him know what your concern is. Obviously, we will, we take care of it, or we'll look into it and fix it as quick as we can, whether it's using, utilizing the police department or, or whomever. But Danielle, many lunches, goes out and drives around and looks, along with other, Dan Aaron, who's receptionist up here. So I've kind of, I've kind of thrown this at every two or three people to try and get this done, but I still want you to consider, if not, and not tonight for sure, in the future, next year's budget, to look at this position, and we'll bring you more information on it. I think we've already got salaries. Danielle's not here yet tonight, but we've got all that kind of looked at across the state, or across the, yeah, the state, and see what other towns do. I will say that the splitting of those two jobs, the home control officer at the time, but home control, what are we calling it now?
Animal services.
Animal services, splitting that from code and putting that under the PD is, I think Chief Bob every day for taking that on. It wasn't something he was real excited about, but he's done a wonderful job, and that lady's done a great job. So it just proved to me even more that that was the right thing to do with that, and then we need to get code officer lined up one of these days. So just be mindful of that, and we'll come back to you later in time. Not asking for anything tonight. In fact, I'll ask to table that again officially, if that's okay with everybody?
I motion to table it.
Motion, second. Take it.
Mr. Nigga?
Yes.
Mr. Derrick?
Yes, sir.
Your grandma?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is planning ordinance to rezonate from R1 to C2 property located in 300 South Coker, third reading, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. Councilman, this is the third reading for the piece of property on the northeast corner of Coker and, and for the Dubai assets coming through. That was a residential property at one time. They removed the building, determined the goal of the property, like having rezoned to C2, so that in the future, when the lady comes along, the animals put down a retail operation, and it'd be ready, ready to go.
Questions? Mr. Bell.
I'm making a motion to put this on the third reading, but I'm only...
Second. Motion, second.
Mr. Nigga?
Yes.
Your grandma?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Number three is city attorney, resolution to establish codification committee to table from the last meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry, I jumped. Trying to get you got it, sorry. Go ahead if you've got it. If you don't have it? Yeah, Mr. Plummer. Thank you.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 23-10 for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Greenwood, amending the official zoning map of the city of Greenwood and for other purposes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Let's keep going. Yeah. Y'all good with the unit up there? I need to take care of business first. If that's okay. Let's do our business.
Yeah, so this is just the codification committee we talked about the last month or two. I believe that Charlotte went back and added section four at the council's request. Talking about who the chair, vice chair would be, and when and where the meetings would
So it was highlighted what was changed or added to?
What's highlighted, what was, what was added?
Okay.
And again, this is to kind of comprehensively take a look at municipal code as a whole. What prompted the discussion was all the bills that just passed through legislature and how that's going to affect our municipal code locally. Sooner we can get to work on this, I think the better off we'll be. Although we do have about a year of grace period, I believe, Hunter, is that correct, on most of these? It'd be nice to start looking at it now.
I want to address the one under section two, one member of the city of Greenwood Economic Development Committee. I think we've got that already. We have two members, being you two, Sonny and Mr. Turner from the street. And then the other is, I think, and you may have just said this, I'm sorry to do it, the structure of it and the meeting times and all that, that you gentlemen asked for last meeting.
I don't think this is very necessary.
Yeah, it would be very old. Mr. Palmer says, you need to kind of get some traffic.
I'm not the motion guy. Who's the motion guy? How motion guy?
I'm not the motion guy. This bill, I'm not a big fan of committees. It's been viable, it's very viable, isn't it?
Well, you know, the problem is, you can look back on our ordinances, and you can pull up an ordinance and then find another ordinance that contradicts it, and we just need to, I mean, that's a, that's a good list of people there to at least be giving it a look over. And, and there's, there could be some low hanging fruit in there. And if nothing other than get that on the first swipe, we're in better shape.
And a good, what's... So not a commission. It's going to be, they're going to be suggesting, bringing this to you, Mr. Councilman.
I wouldn't, I'd say in what department head job descriptions look like across the board. I always thought this kind of stuff fell over there.
Just having, just seeing the description of the department.
Well, I would assume that if there's an ordinance out there that deals with lawns and whatever, we're going to have some, that is from our planning department, look through the current one, or whoever's in charge of lawn and high grass department, or whatever.
And I think that's kind of the way it's been. One of the things that I would suggest with this, I would like to see this pass, would be to have Charlotte as the chairman. And that would be, that way we would be able to have our first meeting and then kind of a co-chair or whatever we did. Any of my ordinances that I draw up, like you're talking about, for the code enforcement or whatever, like I always run through her, too, because she is the guru. And not only for spelling and putting all the dots and commas in it, but she knows the municipal code. And that Travis would be the person to look over to. Oh, I can't be used to do that. But the more eyes that we have on our ordinances, the better. You know, if like Mr. Kennedy said, if the grass didn't have a penalty attached to it, I think that as approved, we can make sure that those are in there. Hunter's working on a cross-the-board penalty for ordinances, because that's the hammer that we use. And so, anything to do with streets or police or whatever like that, I agree with you. The department head should be the star of the ordinance, which then it goes through everybody, make sure that we do got all the items. And my suggestion, like I said, if it passes, that it would be with Charlotte being the chair of the...
And it's listed as such.
Is it?
Sonny, yes, sir. Seibert, doesn't have her name, but Seibert, treasurer, chair of the...
Like I said, I haven't seen it listed.
Well, it seems to me with the closing, this last legislature, there were a lot of state laws that may be conflicting with our city.
Come here.
So, this to me would add more focus on trying to rectify those things.
You know, one law that's going to affect the planning division is that we have no more planning jurisdiction. And our planning jurisdiction ends at the city limits. Now, we are, we're in conversation with our county judges to have the county judges come in from the other side and say, pass a, an ordinance through the county that says any subdivision outside the city limits of a community must follow their subdivision regulations. One thing that we did have, and they told me during the municipal meeting, they were talking about no planning jurisdiction, do not go there, don't do this, don't do that. And I said, "Well, we have an ordinance that says we will not extend water and sewer outside the city limits." He said, "You've got the hammer right there." He said, "That tops that." He said, "Y'all are in good shape." But we still need the support from the county to, so if somebody wants to put in a subdivision right outside our city limits, they have to print our road, the roads and infrastructure up to our standards. And so, we're working on that to kind of circumvent the state.
And so far, that's meeting with good conversation.
Yes.
And not having said that. I'll see this as a constructive meeting, so I'm gonna make a motion that we pass the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion second.
Mr. Nigger.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
I would love to, yes.
Mr. Ring one?
Yes.
Mr. Decker.
Enthusiastic, yes.
That's average. That should be back to normal.
Don't revisit the pay raise request at the end of the year.
Mr. Plummer, read the resolution.
Can you read it this entire year?
I don't think so.
I was like, "Yeah, I'll type one."
Resolution establishing a codification committee for the city of Greenwood to study and review the city's code of ordinances. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. I think that's gonna be very helpful. Yeah, so Sonny spoke out for you, Mr. McCoy, earlier this morning. So, we're gonna get you up first.
Okay.
And so, listen, Kent McCoy.
Yes, sir.
And so, he's here to talk about planning software. And I'll let you take the floor and tell them what we're hoping to propose.
Good. I appreciate you guys inviting me and I. My name's Kent McCoy. I'm from Westinville, Arkansas, and that's where our company is based, called Tech Can I Go. And through a number of conversations, actually got a number of demos with the directors. That's why I'm here today, and I'll just kind of give you guys a snapshot of the things that have been discussed, and just so you can see what we do. So, I do have a clicker here. I'll push it for a top button. Top button, yeah. So, our company was founded in 2016. We are based in Westinville, Arkansas. We have thirty years of development experience. Actually, I have an accounting finance degree by trade, so I'm not a programmer. Just somehow, the way fate has it, I run a programming company or a software company. We do operate now in multiple states, and we have a number of customers in Arkansas. Bieber Springs, P Ridge, Parksville, they have all utilized, are utilizing our software. And then they, in some cases, have switched from their existing provider. Why we are different, I would say, is that we try to deliver process during results. So, we didn't come from industry, we didn't come from, you know, just starting a municipal software. We started actually heavy construction and doing repair and maintenance systems and stuff, and then kind of fell into this and started this municipal software called Tech Can I Go. We have built it specifically for the citizen, and the city officials in mind. If the citizens don't want to use it, then it's kind of useless. We are very customer service focused, but I think that's the one thing you hear our customers are talking about. We do have a modular pricing for maximizing efficiency and minimizing cost to the city. And our software can grow with the city, because it is modular, you can pick what you want. Just a few things here, and, you know, not to bore you with stuff, but a lot of things we hear is that municipalities have a combination of a manual process as well as software driven. Well, if you have the software, and you're still trying to drag on paperwork, it doesn't do a lot of good for you. There's also just officials who don't have one of the paperwork, phone calls. They can't actually go out and inspect property. They can't do the enforcement things that you heard about tonight. They may have existing software that they pay for, and definitely they can retreat to that one tonight while I'm actually here. They actually understand the need for software, but haven't found it suitable. Budget constraints, high costs, and citizens are still wanting to use it because of complexity. Our solution, that's actually a type of, it says, fully digital with manual processes. I should say, eliminating manual processes. System notifications throughout, so there's SMS, email notifications, let contractors, whoever know what is going on. It is customized for your city, it's modular based, and it's built focused on the public as well as the city employees, and has real-time tracking, and you can pay through our software. So, when you pay through our software, we don't take your money, it actually goes straight to your account based on your ordinance needs. You pay by credit card, A C S, wherever you want. We do offer a number of software modules, so all these aren't being discussed for your city necessarily, but you can, you know, see the ones we do offer. Those actually are continuing to grow. Or P Ridge has been a customer. We're adding license, business licensing and planning and zoning for them. So, they use this for a while. Parksville's about to have Parks and Rec. So, that's good that our customers actually are keeping using us and add additional stuff. Some of the things that we've talked about for your city specifically are the ones I created. There's a few more that I think are, I did not list just for the sake of time and you're not knowing for all of them, because it's not finalized. We have spoken with Eric Corrector Bell, Hunter, Dr. Turner, Director Marsh, and Chief Hopps. We sat down, I think it was last week, and just seeing how we can maybe help him. So, I just want to show you a few things about the software, just so you know what it is. And then, you know, we can ask questions, or you can hopefully, when they get to use it, or get to experience it yourself. But there is a public portal, so if you see up there in the top, I'm gonna use this little highlight button. You have this site that, you can put a link on your webpage, you have a public portal. Whenever you're offering to citizens, that's where they would go. It would be tailored to look like your city. They can click on what they need, and then throughout the process, they're able to manage and track what's going on. And so, one thing, I kind of call the tracking down here, kind of part over here, is this little Domino's effect. So, if you ever bought food, it'll let you know it's in the kitchen. We have that for the contractors, so theoretically, it's eliminating phone calls, what's going on. They can see where it is in real time. They also have a workbench that bottom left picture. That gives them, if you're a G C and you have trade permits and other stuff, you can actually see where all your inspections are, where your invoices are, and you can see it in real time. So, it's a database driven. And again, there is SMS, email notifications throughout. Assuming they opt into those, you can't opt out of them, so many have to choose that. But you can, if it's been approved, if you have a C O L and stuff, they get that. The next thing is permitting inspections, which is one that Hunter's and Director Bell is passionate about. But we have at the top, it's easy for them to see the information. They can easily review it, you can send it back in the system, or send it back to the user if it's incomplete, so they can make any changes they need to without having to restart their application, and then send it back to the city to review. Again, it makes it easy to approve, review, and just do what you need to in that process. The nice thing about our software is it's called a progressive web application. That just means that you don't have to download the app. So, nobody has to go out to the App Store or Google Play or something. You just have to go to the URL, it could be used on any device in the field, anywhere there's connectivity. So, you know, if Hunter's out in the field, or Chief Hopps or somebody, they can figure it out on the phone, or if they have a tablet, they can access all this and do what they need to without having to be on a desk. You can, on the permitting inspection, you go all the way through the C O O process. And, you know, theoretically, if somebody does have a C O O commercial building, they can print that off and never have to come to C O O. The business license side of things, it's a, you'll see that that top picture is very consistent with permitting. So, what's nice about this, let's say you have a new business come to town. They could get their building permits, they go through that process, use the same login, go in and get their business license and be able to pay for that online, and have it all there for them to see, and be able to also see it wherever they want, as long as the information's in the database. The one thing we do have in this also is, if you're, I think you're a 1231 business license expiration. So, at the end of, whatever you decide, basically, I think Charlotte's in charge of that. It'll send out a system verification saying your business license is due for renewal. The user, the business can go online, they can renew online, pay for that after the approval process, and they never have to come in. So, we've seen a lot of cities that use this in Alabama and other places, that they're actually collecting wherever you ask for, they're not having to chase it down. It also saves on postage. I think state law requires you to mail out a letter. But if they pay before, you have to mail out a letter, then you don't have to worry about it. So, it just saves a lot of time in the office, which is really nice. So, increased efficiency, reduced data entry errors and stuff like that. Because again, what we're doing here is you're trying to not burn the city official with the paperwork, to have the users do it online. And most people are so pressed to do this anyway, it's not a stretch for them to do it.
And all this is able to be reported on and tracked and see who's over there.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. So, we have, there is reporting throughout the system. Typically, in our onboarding process, we'll create up to five reports for the city customer for them, so you can decide what to enforce and what. Coming for us, it's a big topic at the time. So, in the code enforcement, what's nice about this is it allows you to take the reported violation. If the reported violation is confirmed, then you can actually keep record. When the notification was sent, you could print off a template letter that is loaded into the system. That letter can be emailed out, emailed or PDF. You can print out a trifle, and you can put it into an envelope or a certified mail, whatever you need to do. And then it actually builds that record for you if you ever have to go report about it. So, that's really handy here. We also have a violation map, so you can pull up the map, and click on a link, and you can see, it's actually our office address, it's hard to see. But there's been lots that have happened at our office, and so there's a lot of violations there. But it just, and it creates an inspection record, too, which is nice, because that inspection record tells the home enforcement officer who is deemed to be named, it seems, but they need to go back and inspect this property. So, it's very helpful. We're seeing a lot of benefit out of our cities as well. Parks and Rec, so talking to Casey, I didn't mention him, but someone else who's been on this. Our Parks and Rec is what you'd think it would be. It allows you to do reservations online. So, my in-laws are from Greenwood, even though I didn't have any impact on their being here tonight. But they were looking at getting, my wife's sister just got married last week, in any Greenwood, but she didn't go to Bell Parks, so I'm sorry about that. But this allows you to do those reservations there. You can also do pavilions, you can do it everywhere, it doesn't matter where it is. So, they can, again, pick the venue and the location, go fill out the information that's approved online. Again, SMS, email notifications throughout, avoid double bookings. Parksville, one of the things they had is a retired special operations guy who's been in the aquatic center, showed up, double booked, his people wrote it down. And the mayor is also former military. He basically played a place for the special forces guy, but it's not a good thing to happen. So, this helps eliminate that. We also have some membership and stuff that allows for summer signups. That's how Casey managed summer as well. Another one is city maintenance. Again, we do have a heavy repair and maintenance background. You know, we think, when we talk about cost, one of the things that I think get neglected, especially on cities and really any organizations, is planned maintenance of equipment, as well as just repairs and keeping track of, if I need to have a John Deere or a Cat or Ford or study. So, this allows you to do that. You can send work orders out into the field to foremans, and they can easily, you know, just manage repairs and easily do pre and post trips, keep your mileage, and schedule that plan minutes, hopefully eliminate costs. So, that's kind of the, I mean, I went really fast, I apologize, but that's the number of the things we have discussed here. Again, nothing's been finalized, we've done a number of demos, had a number of conversations. We can do a fast setup, so typically, our cities get onboarded in four to six months. That is obviously dependent on the amount of customization we have to do, because we do customize it for our city. It does include all the training, you know, as much as it takes to get everybody comfortable with it. Customer support, one of the things that people value in our company is that we do, we're pretty much always available and handling issues very quickly. And we can integrate. So, I think discussing with Director Marsh, you guys use CSA or Serpoint, I believe, and there's ways that we can do some integration on that if we need to, for uploading, you know, journal entries or whatever in the system. So, yeah, I think Hunter can obviously speak to the reason that maybe what should be done now is lacking. We have been able to, or our system does take care of. Obviously, we are local to Arkansas, so I like to say that should give anybody a leg up if everything's equal. And then lastly, I think after talking, and the things that we're talking about, were actually to save the city money from what you're paying out, which also is like a pertinent discussion after the night. So, is there any questions? Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
I think so.
You're talking about expense tracking, assets listed. Is there a way to port that legacy data into this system?
Yes, sir.
Or be manual entry?
No, sir. So, we can't enter, anytime we do a migration of data, there are database concerns. Like our database doesn't have the existing, or, you know, it's Excel or something. But yeah, we can definitely migrate data. We do that with our industry customers, and we definitely do it on the city side. That's from permitting to anything, that'll be part of online. So, you wouldn't lose that. And our, other than maybe feeling a little bit different in look and feel, I think from what's being done now in for the citizens, it'll be easier to use for them, and there won't be any loss from the city perspective, turning one off and turning one back on.
And how does, so the citizens access it from the city side?
Yes, sir. So, just on the website, there'll be a, I think you have a link now currently, but you. So, it'd be similar to that, and then from that point forward, we take over. So, all the city has to do is just add literally a link on the website somewhere, for whatever department's being offered.
They can compete with.
And we, there's a company called Iwork, so that's who you guys use today. There's Civics Plus, there's Tyler Technology, B S and A. P Ridge is using B S and A, they just switched to us last year. You have, we actually have a gas now, that is thirty plus thousand. They have a company called Civics Plus, I believe, that they pay roughly a million dollars a year, and they're using us for licensing and tax collection, because ours is easier for their department. But yeah, there's definitely a number of competitors, for sure. You didn't have some... Oh, yeah, on the, so on the animal licensing, I believe, is...
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could speak to the, how simple it is to, for your average system to get on there. Like, just like the pet registration, room fees, and the credit card use.
Right. So, one of the things that we talked about on the animal licensing specifically is, they would just go out here, I think we've discussed putting under the business licensing. We'll change the name, so it doesn't specifically say business licensing, and then within that, we have animal. And then they would go through an application. I don't know if I have a screenshot of that. So, that top picture on the building permit up here, it would kind of be, it walked through that similar deal for animal licensing. And then at the end, I think we decided you don't have to approve it, correct? And they would just...
Right. It would be something similar, like if I was registering my dogs, I would do the work for the city. I would get on there and I would say, hey, this dog belongs to me, this is what kind of dog it is, option to upload a picture if they want to, and then submit register, and then they pay right there. It gives Tom the ability to track how much money's coming in, and really, there wouldn't be a need to come down here and register, you'd just do it right there with your mobile app, your phone, your computer, and you could do, I think there was a limit, I think there was a limit up to five, that's what the wardens said right now, up to five, but you could get on there and do as many as you want.
Yeah, we don't care.
Click submit, and then it'll tell you what your bill is, and you just registered five dogs.
And for us, our system's not, we do have a box that we operate in, but it's not out of the box, so it has to be a street city, that's part of it. So that'll usually send a process, we'll get with each director that chooses to use our module that comes in, and really understanding ideas, and in some cases, we're a little bit developing as we go, because it is a, it's a moving target, and that's how we're going to do everything.
How you, hey, can you interface with, like, the chips?
Uh, yes, we talked about that. You put your chip number on there, the way we can scan it, we can look at that, that database, and it'll pull up that number, okay, that dog belongs to Mr. Phil Kimbo or whatnot, or there's a picture. And the good thing is, it carries over from year to year, and it builds that database, so if a dog passes away or whatnot, you can go in there and change, or you can get a new dog.
And if you choose to use the licensing module that we're talking about here, that pet owner will also get a notification that your dog is due for renewal. Even if they don't have to pay, I think we talked about in ordinance, they don't have to pay after the first time, but they do need to continue, say, you know, I have this dog, or it's deceased, and they can activate that, but there wouldn't have to be another payment being made.
Right. Right now, you're supposed to register every year.
I mean, we talked about this, we're just one time a page. The goal is, is we can find owners, and we're not spending the money at the kennel. So, not only would this streamline, I think this would get more people to register their owners, it would help us find the owners quicker and save a lot of money from the kennel.
We haven't, we haven't actually talked about tax collection, but in Alabama, we collect a lot of taxes for them, because they have occupational tax, liquor tax, people can pay that online and submit it as if you would, like a, your ten forty at the end of the year, or you can go through an approval process. So, you know, especially on A and B, where the rest of it takes two percent or something, that's one of those kind of forgotten, and there's not really an A and B that goes out and tracks it down, and you wait for the state, so you have the ability to do that online. Again, you're probably going to increase at least the collection side maybe faster, because they have to register the license, they'll tell you if they need to pay tax or not, and that's just another area where the city can get more revenue. And again, we're going to save you money in the software, and you're getting more stuff than you're paying for today, but that's another, you might, like, you know, more revenue, not only faster, but more, that's been hard to get, because you just have to only do it online.
And you have, you know, you have this budgeted?
Some of us. Well, I say some of us, so, planning, for instance, this is going to replace what we already have budgeted, but for PD or some of these other departments that don't currently have any software, if you know, but at the very last page, there's three pages that you should all have, there's a budget effect at the very back, that will tell you what each department would experience as an overall effect of the budget, and that could change, right?
That could change, depending on who all...
Yes.
Is on...
Yes.
Walk me through there, the numbers on this.
No problem. So there is a public facing portal on a base application that's required to be purchased, is fifty-four hundred dollars, and...
Where am I looking?
On the very first page, we'll just start at the beginning, and this is where I'll bring out my T-Wall quote. On the very first page, on the left-hand side, you'll see all of the modules that are associated with this company. Most of them are twenty-one hundred dollars for each module, with the exception of the citizen request portal, which we don't currently utilize. We'd like to get that, that offers for citizens a place to go in there and submit a violation note, say, they want to say, this person's got tall grass, that's going to save us on all the phone calls that we have to pay now. And it can be used for more than just tall grass, potholes in the street, anything and everything, and it will allow us to see the complaints, track the complaints, and it's...
You know, the department that's sharing with it.
Yeah, it's the cheapest module on here, but I think one of the more valuable ones. The ad, I call it the asset management, I think they have it titled city maintenance. It can be used for more than just maintenance of the vehicles, you can use it as a database to track all of your city assets from computers, vehicles, street signs, anything and everything to utilize it for.
So we could use this for insurance purposes, to give them a list of vehicles?
For sure. It's definitely, we definitely don't need depreciation for a reason, but you can definitely throw all your fixed assets in, wherever those are, it doesn't matter, our system doesn't care. It could be extinguishers, roofs, air conditions, roaming assets, trackers.
It would send you a notification, you can set scheduled inspections for all of your buyer extinguisher and all of your facilities, it would tell you, hey, today, you gotta go with your buyer extinguisher and C O O. And it's endless abilities with that, and I think it's super modular, and would benefit every department in the city as a whole to have a comprehensive asset list, that we seem to have a list that floats around somewhere and has a computer on it that the plan you purchased in two thousand eight that we can't find. It's just not, it's underutilized. So, let's see, continuing down to the next section on the left-hand side, Tech Connect Software Pricing Comparison. So this is just a direct comparison of their pricing for what we currently have, which , and this includes their onboarding fee for just those modules, puts us at a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, including the seventy-five hundred dollar onboarding fee. You take that out and remove it apples for apples, what we currently pay, it would be saving almost four thousand annually, and everything that we have now, obviously, is budgeted. So if we didn't get anything else, we're automatically in savings position. The top right here inside is just going to give you a breakdown of what we have now, what it cost us now. I can't go into those in detail without reaching contract, per the contract, and have another vendor here that could be doing better.
What about the, can you go into some more detail on setup G I S integration and data conversion?
Uh, so that's within I-Work's right now. So that was their fee, this last time we increased our contract with them. The, the original setup fee would have been similar to the onboarding fee with Tech Connect, that would just be importing all of the city's data, which we already had all of that when we updated our contract this last time, to include code enforcement module and business license module.
Would you include things like the manholes?
Uh, it probably could, and this software also has G I S capabilities, it didn't show it in planning, it did put something up for code enforcement, intend to have that in play, it makes a whole lot of sense. I have, with your all provision, within the budget this year, purchased the Azure software to begin doing G I S data collection and maintenance, and I'm starting to do that now, so I'll be able to take that data, put it straight into your overlap everything, and see how it's going.
And testing.
Uh, the bottom right column is just a bigger version of what's on that last page. And then there is a four-year breakdown on your second page for each individual department, what the module would cost, if there is an existing budgeted, my item is in red, with the city savings there, parentheses, and then the department's sub total at the bottom. I divided the onboarding fee between all of the departments that would need to have this software, in my opinion, and then I divided the public facing portal and base application between all the departments that would be utilizing that base application. So if the water department, the wastewater department were to utilize the asset management, they're not going to use the consumer side of any of the other softwares, so I didn't feel it was relevant to have them pay for the base application, public facing board. So asset management, if you look there, it's split between all ten departments. And I say ten departments, and I don't get onto them, but I realize that finance and city clerk, most of us are all under general, but we try to try to line it out, so that you could all see exactly what each department or sub-department was using. And this may be an error on my part underneath the police department, I've got it listed, they would be using a tax collection module, but that may be a better solution to split the business license module with the city clerk, instead of the tax collections, and let everything go down on its own for A and B. It shouldn't change the value in any way, they're the same price per module.
Has Charlotte had the opportunity to look at it?
We have, I have attempted to get her to come look at this, and she's not been available every time, including tonight. So she, I've spoken with her, not, I'm not saying that, but she says as long as it doesn't increase her budget at all, she was okay with it, if it had more functionality than what we currently use, which this will. And it is a, those small savings, it is a savings, two hundred dollars.
Is that module for module or adding module?
That would be adding module.
Okay. You're actually, yeah, you know, a bit more, it's not saying it's not...
Yeah, we don't currently have it into tax collections for A and B, money coming, so that tax collection module would handle that.
So what about, what about on the support side, if they're...
Support side is what drew me to this company, not to say that I have very many issues with I-Works, but it's become very cumbersome. When I started here, almost five years, five years ago, you could pretty much call that I-Works, if I wanted to adjust any of the fees, I could do it myself, and they've taken a lot of the functionality away, and it's just, it's become user-heavy, and that kind of defeats the purpose of having new software, in my opinion. The, the overall view of Tech Connect, after I went through the demo, I wouldn't say it was instantly sold, but the, the status bars at the top, I get more phone calls about, what's the status of this project, and I'm like, man, it says it in words on your screen if you look on your side, and then it just, it doesn't get itself up, maybe the colors would be a little easier to identify.
Or for like, you're in Russellville.
Yes, sir.
We need service on the application, or how, how does that work?
Right. Yeah, the best testimony was customers typically, when a customer gets ahold of us, and even the public at times, even though the public theoretically would deal with the city, we handle it within five, ten minutes, and you could call any of our customers, and they agree that the customer services, I mean, Peter Ranger, that's one of the things that he has been most impressed, is he said, it's not necessarily your product, it's your, it's one that you got a sixty-five-year-old building inspector to come onboard and use your software, and then besides that is the fact that your customer service is dealing with you. So, you know, we are, in this world, there's really any organization, there's always consolidation, you see that a lot in the software world, where it's like, hey, I knew these people, their private equity comes in, and we are locally owned by a guy in Russellville, and so we don't, our goal is not to just sell the software and sell it, you know, he actually never sold a company, he said that the other day, but, yeah, so we're, we're here to stay, and we're all people that, much for the most part, with Arkansas Tech, local people from Walton, Russellville, Newton County, Jasper, and we're all right there in Russellville, speak the languages of Arkansas, and hoping to grow outside of Arkansas, but definitely bashly about being in the cities here.
I had no idea that you have relatives here, so that, that does make it a little bit better. He's, he's been quick to come down, for sure, every time I call, he's like, I'll be there tomorrow.
Well, I didn't stop by there, I'm a playmaker.
Yeah. Everybody that knows who his in-laws are.
Kelly and Mayor Moore are the ones who they are, but, I don't like to describe where they live, I would have never had a problem, but...
Who's that?
Kelly and Mayor Moore.
Yeah, good people.
Okay.
I do like the fact that this software has the text notifications, even though they can't opt out of it right now, if something goes on on our portal, or I issue a permit, and I offer other changes to status to open, I have to then contact them or wait till they contact you, or like another good start. It's kind of...
If nobody asked, where are we at, where are we on our contract?
Uh, it expires in December.
My fault, Hunter, I mean, this is a benefit of also staying a smaller company, and locally owned, we'll get you onboarded as soon as possible, and the formalities, you know, approval and all that stuff, we don't have to worry about that now, whatever, we even talked about on the onboarding fee, not having to pay that upfront, just annualize it over the contract to save your hit, that would happen, so there's a lot of flexibility we have there, and, you know, we, it's kind of a handshake key, you know, I don't know how that works in the city world, but yeah, in good faith, we can all move forward and not worry about the formalities, that's all we're going to do.
And that rating is a three-year?
Three-year. Typically, which I think, I don't know, I thought someone told me in Arkansas that you only, you know, actually agreed to one, one's budgeted, so it's actually here and there, you know, people do three years, but it is a three-year period.
So I did divide the fifteen thousand dollar onboarding fee by three years, and then split that by department, so it made it a little easier to swallow for a department, but at the end of the day, it's still a fifteen thousand dollar onboarding fee.
Which one are down if you decide to use less modules? So that's, that was kind of the whole pick of the wheel, but if you decide to use something different, then I'll probably, you know, adjust.
The hope I had with this presentation, pretty raw discussion, is that I have a little bit more direction on where we can go as a city with these modules, so that I can start narrowing down the pricing. I don't have a whole lot of time in, in this Excel sheet, but if I could spend a little bit more, and that's more direction, I could narrow it down, for sure. The, the asset management, I think, is a fairly important module for, for the city, but I can't sell that, you know, I think you've all seen the value in that alone.
Okay. Don't, don't, just from the standpoint of the bottom, now, if you looked at competition?
I have, yes. I looked at Civic Plus, Casey has looked at...
He's had?
No, it wasn't Civic Plus.
I mean, there's a lot of, the regulation they're directed at, so there's a lot of...
He went right there, yeah. And I've looked at, it's a good city, I believe it would want to put on through I C C, which is tailored much more towards department building codes. I still like the usability of this one over that one, pricing-wise. They're, they're much bigger companies, so you don't get as much flexibility in their pricing, but they're all about the same. This one has a substantial savings over, over I-Works. Every time I call I-Works, if I need a form change or customize, it seems like it's another, you know, six or nine, and I'm kind of tired of that. And he, and he can't promise that, but...
Yeah, you have to charge the city for wrestling issues.
So is I-Works, is that also under your contract?
It started as a three-year, but they, I believe, Sonny and Dawn acquired that in mid-two thousand twenty or early two thousand twenty, and so we're on an annual contract basis.
So if this is going to take like four, four months to get all that, seems like there's going to be a scheduling issue, if all contracts up to December with I-Works, how do you get this all done?
For, for planning, I'm not as concerned, because it's an existing budgeted item, and the new software would come in under budget, and I have faith that you all would approve this as a budget, I'm saving money inside planning's budget, so I feel fairly confident to get data over to him, to start doing the onboarding prior to our contract, I-Work's expiring, but there is always that risk. The other departments that don't currently have anything, it wouldn't be as big of a ordeal for them to get authorization at budget time and then proceed with onboarding.
We, we also just shoulder the risk, in our conversation, and again, if it didn't work out, it didn't work out, we could start working towards implementation to make sure there's no loss, without those formalities, and if it doesn't go our way, then that's the risk we took, so...
So we'd have to start transferring stuff over to all?
Yes.
And it would be, I mean, it would be a little bit of a stagger, like, you know, if you get five modules, it's not always a great idea to do all of those at once, so we would do the ones you're using currently today, then we'd work for the ones that are out, you know, maybe even the first of the year, so that'd make it easier on the city transitioning, and then we can make sure to get the most pertinent. So that'd make it easier on the city transitioning and then we can make sure to get the most pertinent, pertinent ones started as soon as possible again where it went.
Now, this onboarding fee, is that discounted for the more departments that get onboard or is this still a flat rate regardless?
No, it's, it's highly discounted, so typically any city that starts with us, it's anywhere from fifty-five to seventy-five hundred dollars for one module. Um, and so, yeah, if you're talking five modules, it's, um, it's a significant savings. And we're still gonna have to do the same process for each department.
And I say that to say this, let's say that Hunter goes ahead and starts getting onboarding here soon. And then once he gets up and running and then maybe Chief Hoss is, well, I did like the looks of that, okay, I'm gonna get on. I'm wondering if there's a way, if we end up snowballing and dominoing departments, can we come back and say, we, we'd like to have the fifteen thousand? We weren't sure what we're gonna, what we're getting, how well it's gonna work, how user friendly it is. I mean, instead of just saying, everybody's coming, thank you for the discount, or I didn't know, maybe there's a.
No, we'll, we'll, again.
You don't say.
We can, we can work with you however you need to, we're flexible.
All, all of the departments that we've got, uh, three were fifty. And of those three, and I'm not saying anything about anybody that didn't show any interest, uh, it was water, wastewater, and fire. Fire says that they already have asset management program within their fire software that is ending due to some of the nine-one-one. Yeah, alterations, so they're all to the nine-one-one systems, unfortunately. So he's not entirely sure what he's got coming up, so he didn't want to commit to any kind of module pertaining strictly to the fire, but the asset management is also seven hundred and fifty dollars annual to his department. For the first three years and then drops to two hundred and fifty. Uh, that was pretty minimal in any grand scheme thing, so I felt like he would, he would join at, at that price. So then we're left with water, sewer, and I feel like two hundred and fifty dollars, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna.
Did somebody, Chief, sorry.
I just wanted to get two, two points. I would like to, cause my ordinance is based on what we do here. Fees kind of tailored made to that and the qualification process for it and all that, so I'm really wanting to try and get on. What we did is maybe as a tester, I don't know, me and Hunter haven't talked about that, but we kind of discussed a little bit. Two, as a risk management, you put all your assets on, your vehicles, you, city attorney can go in there and say, yep, the brakes was done, that's your car, you know, if, if we have employee get hurt or whatever, we can see the maintenance on each one of these pieces of equipment. And we can kind of represent ourselves, kind of a risk management. Uh, of the, this, this one's done, brakes was done, oil changes were done. That way, paying this and those same, you know, maintenance wasn't done on our equipment. And it'd be easy. And it tracks its, once you put the equipment on there, it tracks itself and it's pretty user friendly from what he showed me. I'm not a computer guy, but I struggle. And I was like, okay, I can get onboard with that. My, my, Tom and him are like, do that. And that's where I look at things, Kenny Moore, I could do this, and that's, you know, that's what impresses me about it. Some very people are struggling.
Sir, you're the bar, we're talking.
Yeah, it's my own family.
Do you have software up there that deals with your sensitive, um, what's the word looking for? You got, uh?
ACIC.
Okay, good. Well, I'm talking about all your investigative, uh, what's the word looking for? You got stuff for case?
Your R of S is what is that stood up?
Oh, yeah, we have that.
I mean, it's not, it's doesn't go.
No, that'd be a separate, that's, that, I mean.
That reporting system. And ACIC is all by the state, it'd be, that's just two different things. Wouldn't handle that at all.
The, with the city maintenance module, I'll say, uh, and you may be able to speak about it better. You were talking about how you could create users and roles so that if the street department was accessing that module, they would only see street department assets. It wouldn't be, they can see an overarching, all the PG's assets and everything else.
Yeah, maybe I'll be locked in based on roles and responsibilities in the department.
Okay. So, so budget, you, you would compare, um, fifteen, eight, three eighty-three of I-Works to your eleven thousand four hundred?
Yes, sir.
But the eleven thousand four hundred does not cover any part of that onboarding fee. Did it spread out over three years? So are we still on your budget?
That, so that is, that would be your price after the three year contract and onboarding fee is, uh, I was giving you that price comparison for apples to apples as far as what we pay for now.
So, so what is your budget for this software?
Uh, we would be, so on the right hand side, here's on the front page.
I mean, what have you budgeted for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, sir?
I don't know that we've set up the budget yet, gone through it, but I would assume that it would be sitting at the fifteen thousand four eighty-three what we have current budget for current software, which would bring us with what I intend to use at two thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollars under current budget.
If I may, Teresa, I know you're not the director, but give any opinion as the chair or always were on this discussion, right?
Well, this is the first I've kind of heard, heard.
We got a director here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got one, we got one too.
I didn't see you.
We, we have, we have a separate audit for water and sewer. And years ago, we had one of the most stringent, they require inventory systems. We had ninety-nine percent of that, of what they offer. I, I could see it's used and that someone has to maintain it's up and we've got a backlog program. We got a guy that maintains it, it's just over about ten, just, just that one thing, so. We have our own building software that does work orders. You know, we, we had ninety-nine percent of that. I could see it being a great asset to Hunter's department, but probably not for us.
I just, sorry, I didn't see you.
What about, what about your opinion on the insurance side of this and the asset management piece?
Oh, that would be great. Cause I mean, you have everything right there and.
Cause right now, we don't have anything through it does that for the city, it's very many.
I usually go through, I usually go through every, every director and they give me great updates and, and stuff. I mean, I've got it on a spreadsheet that Tom and I work with, but as far as noting, you know, the, the maintenance or anything, that's not even.
And Tom, what about the interface? We didn't go into a lot of detail, but would all these modules be able to give you the financial information?
Yeah, we said, I sat in on the presentation to all the directors. That was one of my concerns is how easy is the interface, but even if it doesn't, that's not a gift, you know, killer. It's everything we get now is coming through manually and we're, we're entering it into the system. As long as I get the information out of the system, I can get it into our system. Now, if you're.
It would be great, I would love, I mean, that's what it means is to have the interface, I don't want Tom to have to print a permit list out to then have to key all of the entries in manually, that just seems beyond the point.
Correct, but it's not, it's something that we have to have stable.
I mean, CS, City Board of Counties are locally installed server based accounting system. CSA is out of Moll, but then the fund accounting software is out of Michigan or Wiski. So I've actually talked to our company, they're looking for a fund accounting software to partner with. Um, but also I know Jay Sheldon from CSA, just from working Expos, trying to work together, Scott Sheldon is the owner. So I know that their fund accounting at minimum will allow for a CSD file that can be manually uploaded, go to your backs for approval and then make your general entry, uh, entry as needed at a, if you can't do it, which I know they can do that part, if they can do more integration, then we'll definitely do that. Um, a lot of times with accounting, they just lock down their systems and they're allowed for a lot of integration. Uh, but we do have reports where you can literally say, here's revenue by department, by GL account, and you can take that piece of paper compared to, you know, the strike reconciliation or whatever to say this, uh, revenue item is correct and just make the GL general entry. Well, I appreciate you guys letting me, I'm here, but if there's any more questions, we can ask.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Uh, would you counsel permission on a thinking here, I was gonna ask the minute of Mr. Handel, this is Cody Handel. And if you'd like to address them as the President of the United States, you have my, you have my permission.
My name's Cody.
He has a pretty good impression, I just don't.
They might see that later.
Okay.
Jason gave you the green light, if you gave it to him.
Oh, you got it.
Uh, so I'm originally the municipal manager for cars, I'm Cody Handel, I've been with cars for going on two years now. Started as territory sales executive and now I'm moving into more of the municipality side, so really excited to be here in front of you. If any of you get a point of contact with us or we, we really fly here tonight, so just wanted to put a name in the face and, and talk trash with the guys.
There, uh, so it's really not a discussion about contract renewal that, that renewed already automatically?
Yes, sir.
Correct, Mr. Tom.
You're thirty.
Yeah, so we renewed, but I think, I think.
On the fall.
January, yeah, on the fall, January you'll come back and we'll have that discussion.
Correct, we'll probably be back in January.
I told him earlier that he'll be back in January to talk about a price increase.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
See for some cars.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Wow.
I know, I know.
Now you gotta do trouble.
Put me on the spot.
Under that, yeah.
But really just wanted to come put a name in the face and introduce myself and let you know that we're here for you. And if there's anything that I can do, I can leave some of my business cards for you guys and if you have any questions, comments, concerns, anything, you wanna know? If something's broken, uh, we wanna know if we're doing something good.
And so, if I, if I may, because there was only agenda for a discussion regarding, uh, the water appointing, we're water wastewater office about billings and, and I think that's been more true, Teresa, are you?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
I'm not, we're getting, getting there anyway.
Okay, I know Mr. Brown had put it on the agenda for that purpose, so to my understanding of all parties, we're getting there, so, okay, cool.
Okay, timeout, now. So I'm sitting here, y'all are talking about, we picked these guys up mid-year that one year, we kicked the other dude out. And this expired on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Automatically renews for additional term of three years unless either party divides, other party intends to terminate the agreement at the end of the current renewal term. So are we gonna be sticking with the June thirtieth every year or is it gonna at some point turn into a? Does it matter?
It's a plumber you want.
I mean, well, I'm just wondering, are we gonna just stick with the middle of the year renewal? Or are we gonna have a six month there, we're gonna come back and visit and say, hey, we didn't, we're gonna stay with you guys, but we need this thing to say January one to December thirty-one? And then also I'm curious about when and why, or why not, are we putting back out two bids? For, uh, I don't care whether, I love the cars, guys, it's great service, but I'm just wondering, this is, says automatic renewal, is this gonna be something we're gonna just keep automatic or you're doing, or we're gonna put this up for bids?
So we have a right to do that prior to it expiring, I'm not an eternity business, but I think, to my understanding, if we wanted to pursue bidding going out for bid, we need to do it before that date. I'm not sure how it landed on the middle of the year.
Well, we fired out this in the middle of the year, then the guys came onboard.
That's right, that's right, so, and they came in, I hold trash for a few weeks myself.
Right. I was under the impression we were gonna do a deal where we were gonna get it started back over January one, but I, I guess I just.
I think it just rolls quick enough.
And I haven't caught a heat from anybody about, hey, when are we gonna put the trash contract out for bids, but I'm just curious if we. Well, these guys, this guy to have a great service, but, I mean, if somebody comes in and bid him about ten dollars or whatever, or two dollars or whatever.
Or if Jason never comes to see us anymore, that'd be a, that'd be.
Oh.
Just joking.
Boy, I got it. I just wanted to make sure we, I mean, we put everything else out for bids, I just didn't know why the trash wouldn't be one of them. I think we, we're getting paid for a buck, I would probably should.
We're starting off, yeah, if we weren't, you'd be kicking.
No, it's nice.
I would imagine so.
Okay, so what, what I see, his, his says it renews for one year period, so then this one here says it's automatically renewed for three years.
I thought you did show two a year after.
So on the, the one that I saw, um, which would have been after the initial contract from my, send you. Three years.
Three years.
Oh, it did, it says three.
On the.
Oh, okay. I remember a discussion, but I really haven't slept since then. So Tom, do we need to go to the January board December thirty-fourth? Would that be easier for?
I mean, it doesn't matter to me, they have, there's provisions in here for them to come to you with a rate increase based on circumstances that are beyond their control, such as landfill increases, any, uh, there's a whole bunch of things.
Who surprised? The increases until January twenty twenty-six. That's not anything you have to worry about until January twenty-sixth.
And we'd like to know potentially what that would be for budget purposes, if you know it earlier, that would be nice.
Yeah, I can check on that, thank you.
But I don't know that matters, I just hate fiscal year, mid-year. I love New Year's, it's called New Year's Day for a reason, so we're New Year's, oh, trip, new man. About how much headache that'd be to redo, we could change a couple letters or numbers and things, so. I mean, he's fixing to give us a rate increase in January twenty-sixth, we might as well start a fresh three year deal.
Can you check, would you check the powers that be?
Yeah, I can check on that.
Their thought is, and I think it sounds like the council would kind of like it.
Well, it's just me, me and the idiot.
No, everybody else. Well, it'd be easier for us to, uh, contract with, you know, with girl club or whatever, they're all January, same time, yeah.
Yeah, I can check into that real quick, absolutely, thank you.
Perfect. Anything else for this gentleman? Did he wait, did they long time to get moved up?
I personally love the service, I mean, it's been fantastic, I haven't seen a bunch of hydraulic over on my street.
Before your time, city vehicles, not with stainless hydraulic. I, I can brag on cars too, you know, cause we get the calls, Danielle gets the calls, uh, we get some calls, but fairly, really, pretty quickly they're addressed. So, and taking care of, no, you can't make everybody happy all the time, I'm just a referee of basketball, I know. So, do what you can and know that everybody's thrilled. I will say that the complaints that, of many of the complaints that we get, of however many there are, are not, they don't, they're in the county. So they're not, it's not the city service and they're, they don't know that when they call, so we kind of have to get everybody on the same page on that. And I'm not sure that's a lot, particularly with cities.
Now, our trash bill is involved in our water and sewer bills, great, is it all going on one time?
Yeah, that's, that, there was a, there was an issue that they're working through about the billing process. And I think everybody's on the same page now.
Well, just so you know, unfortunately, I feel a lot of complaints about our water bills going up, I always say it's the trash.
No, no, I'm sure it's the trash.
It's those, the garbage.
Always the trash.
Always the trash.
Always the trash.
As we're going, hey, how to be, well, water increases all the time.
It's trash, sorry.
Sometimes it's election year, I, I got three more years, I'm good, I'll take it.
Okay, anything else for this gentleman, Mr. Cody? Are you sure you don't wanna do it?
I'll do it.
Give us a little text, ready gentlemen? You don't have to use imagination much, just listen.
Mayor Kinsley, he's a wonderful guy, bringing Arkansas great place. That's all I got, that's all I got.
Perfect. I needed you on the stage during the free fest because I mentioned my name and nobody, they booed, so, yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
So I got a call, so I met Jason, who's our brother, guy that showed up once in a while. Cody, what's the young lady?
Crystal.
Crystal was at a booth at the AML conference, they were there as a vendor. And I got to hear this invitation of, of our president. And I was getting ready to do my speech as the new Arkansas municipal lead president. And I was just about had him on stage to, the president's introducing the new president. We went around and we asked some opinions and they're like, that's what they did. So we never did, so, so thank you for driving all the way here.
Appreciate it, so anything, go for it, reach out, we'll use some cars here.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
They wouldn't boot the ten I am.
It's just me. Maybe, yeah, oh, nice, oh, I've used that all week, by the way.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll tell you one thing, I know we're being recorded, but I, I took a, that sounds bad. I took, I took a city property, which is a, which is a poster, thank you, appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Tom. Yes, sir, thank you, Tom.
Which was a poster advertising the festival I toured, had, and I put a hat on Casey's desk, and I said, this is all you gotta work on, you know, you need a full poster. Thank you very much. Okay, anyway, so, all right, moving on, nobody got that, hopefully.
We're happy to watch it.
That's okay. Okay, and again, I am on, what, number four, police resolution to authorize green application for a salary.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, before you, the resolution to apply for a grant to the Arkansas Economic, is that what you mentioned? It's a grant for cities and municipalities to use towards existing buildings that cities have owned. We thought that this would be a very opportunity to get this salary board bill. It is a 20, 80/20 grant, up to, I think the number is 1.5 million, of course, it would be anywhere close to that, but. The 80/20, it did say in kind work in lieu of the 20%. I talked to Mr. Tom, we've already got the plans drawn by Ma, so we already had it engineered, we already have a plan. So we think that that would be able to use towards that end time, 20% plus we already own the property and we already have an existing building there. So we're gonna ask your permission to apply for this grant, and there's a deadline of July 31st. We've already got pretty much all the headwork done, and we'll just keep the resolution, if y'all bless us with it, with permission, we'll submit it and we'll try to get this grant. Hopefully we can get a salary board bill.
What is this project for, you know?
I apologize.
You weren't here, were you?
Yeah, I was on the, I was on a little beach screen.
No, 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 let's go by this.
Oh, God.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Uh, we, the council graciously approved us to spend $275,000 for a salary board addition. That's what we were told it was expected to be. When the bids came in, I think the lowest one was 140, went all the way up to 160, I just couldn't, we just couldn't do that, that just didn't make sense. And when I was talking about a salary board, it's basically just a oncoming coming off the building with some electric, you know, fans and then lights. So what you could do, relatively cheap to see, it costs a lot of money, so we basically scrapped it. But we had, we had it engineered through Ma, to the, to the learning experience for me. Any commercial, any city on the building has to be engineered. I didn't do that, I, I basically just called a bunch of contractors and trying to order, like ordering a pizza, I don't need this building, and you couldn't do that. So it's a learning experience for me and, you know, hopefully that's an opportunity for us to go ahead and do forward the project. We have already got it engineered through Ma, like I said, and it's strapped in. I would say it's gonna, I don't know what it's gonna cost, that was two years ago, it was 150 to 160, it could be, it was a good thing.
I still might understand what a salary board addition is, or what it's called, is it called?
Carport, basically like the fire department has, so in inclement weather, we can pull them in there, we can lift our cars up, push the tires on real quick. We can do maintenance there, our trailers there if we need to. At one time, we had a car that was evidence, under Chief Gossen, we had a car that was evidence, probably. It sit under our, this is in our yard for probably seven months, you know, we had to keep it intact just the way it was. We couldn't touch it, we had to wrap it up, put caution tape around it.
That's okay, so we want to know what it is.
Yeah. It's just basically the salary board we have in existence now is what we drive in to take prisoners in and process them. It's just basically the extension of that salary board.
Okay.
Is there a maximum or minimum dollar value on stuff that would be engineered? For every single thing?
Any.
Mr. Martin.
I mean, if, if you're gonna add an electrical outlet, then obviously that doesn't have to be engineered. There's not a minimum dollar value for shade, but it would be considered an addition on new construction, which would then fall under the classification to be designed. The requirement to have a contractor's license has a dollar value for the Arkansas Contractor Licensing Board of $50,000.
So the reason we ran, and you know the reason we ran, is the chief unknowing, and then I didn't either, but I was the park director, like, we just get this stuff built.
Well, about 38 grand, if I remember right, when we first yarded, it was under 45, I can't believe some local Yokeland donated his time to do it. But it turns out you gotta have engineering going, I guess. This is the thing Eagle Scout brought you. Put them in the carport.
Well, I say you want that carport to fall down under. You agree about that?
I'll wait while we should get rid of it.
Yes, sir.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pedder?
Not for the salary board.
Thank, thank you, Chief.
Resolution authorizing grant application to the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant Program on behalf of the City of Greenwood Police Department for a salary board addition and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. Number five, Casey's not here tonight, he thinks he needs to take some time off just because he ran a festival, so I'm picking on him. So he's not here.
Did he run the 5K?
Sir.
Did he run the 5K?
I can attest to that, he did not. So he has a similar resolution in front of him, and it's to apply for a grant, the Arkansas Community Assistant Grant for the Inclusive Park Project. Uh, I believe it has a, looking at it. This does not have a amount, it is an 80/20 match. Do we know? We don't know, we had this discussion this morning without Casey there, I almost pulled it, because he's not here to talk about it. So I don't know what they're going for, do you, Tom?
No, it says a max amount available.
Yeah, the maximum is where?
That's what he's applying for.
So last month, we authorized him to apply for the outdoor recreation magic grant for the same thing. So is this supposed to be piggybacked onto that? You authorized what, say that again? The application for the outdoor recreation, that's a different grant? Yes.
But it's supposed to be broad.
Same broad, he's just trying as many of any, he's just trying to piggyback. Yes, yes, so.
Well, I mean, as long as we have the, as long as we're able, or as far as we've done our part to cash any kind of donations.
Yeah. And this is, and I'll just say what Mr. Powell typically says, just for your benefit, you're basically handing over a signed check. Write a blank check, if you will, and that's just his terminology, and it's not necessarily incorrect, you're just, you're allowing him to apply for it. You can't apply without this resolution, and the deadline is.
July 31st.
July 31st, so for him to even have the ability to apply against this.
I got any thinking on that?
I just pulled it up online really quick, it's got a maximum of $1,500.
Yeah, it's printed on here, so it's on the other, the next one.
This is for the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant?
Right, right.
We had it on the other.
Yeah, I told them about the resolution. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, yeah.
The, the match it states on here, the African must be able to match its grant award with cash, any kind of labor, any kind of materials, or any kind of land at a flexible 20% rate.
Okay. You have a $275,000 net.
Right. Well, if he's, if he's going for all of it.
Yeah.
If he, and he may not, you don't have to apply for all of it, but that's the match, you can apply.
Right, and for our part, 20%, the part said that.
Right.
It's like a typical tournament.
There you go.
It's a part of that.
Well, the land itself, you know, is, you can use for the.
Right, so if you're not aware, and I think everybody is, the property that he's talking about is over at, going on, it's on Liver, uh.
Westwood.
Westwood Drive to the left, right before you get to the school, this, this property was donated years ago by the developer to the city for a potential fire department. You know, in the future, fire department years ago, when I was still the park director, Gage said, we're not gonna use that. And Parks Committee, Commission, Committee at the time, probably Commission now, the city owns that property for a park. And so that's the property where this, there's a big sign over there, they've been, they've been raising money, there's a voluntary committee, and I don't know how much money's been raised, but they've got some money. I think, through their donations, this is just another avenue to try to get some funds toward that inclusive park. So I'll make a motion without resolution.
Second.
Have a motion, second to adopt.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
And Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing City of Greenwood to apply for an Arkansas Community Assistance Grant for an Inclusive Park Project for other purposes.
So, uh, where? Where, number seven, Water and Waste Water Commission appointment, a confirmation of Tom Ransome to alternate position on Water and Waste Water Commission. Teresa, you want to address that?
The commission voted at our last meeting to replace Christian Jones, who has moved up and is now on the commission, so we have that spot open. We had one person that was interested, and that was Tom Ransome. Tom is within city limits, he's active in the scouting, he's an emergency services person, he works.
Tom, quick communications.
Thank you, thank you. And he's also an engineer for AT&amp;T, so he has a lot of knowledge with utility work and that type of thing. We have found this has been a valuable position for us. Christian was coming to the meetings and he wasn't susceptible, he was brought right up to snap and to get there and make, make decisions, so I'm walking with this. So I will tell you, I appreciate you allowing this extra position for us, it is really helpful. So tonight we would like for your approval to put Tom in that position, and then we have, I'll be, then he's on that list.
I'm not getting more people.
Second, motion, second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Yes, you mean this?
Thank you very much, thank you, Teresa. Number eight is a resolution, it is exact same resolution that you just approved for the Inclusive Park. And yes, we're in competition, if you will, so it's a resolution to the same grant, Arkansas Community Assistant Grant Program. This has more of a specific amount on there, we are, so this is the street scape that we presented to you last year or further back. It's been engineered, it's been designed, it's engineered, I suppose, to a degree.
We had some changes, I haven't seen yet.
Okay, and that's wholesome?
No, no, it's a.
Cracked and sold, we present, and that's easy enough to bring back at any point for you guys to take another look at it, but it's to redo downtown with, with planters, trees, curb of hill. Better use of parking and things like that. So again, it's just a permission to apply for the grant. And yeah, we, this project, I think the number you have, grand plan's in the amount of 1,583. That may actually reflect the cost of that originally, no, no it wasn't, no, it was not. I think that's still just the amount up to, I'm not sure what's got changed on there.
Okay, so what was the estimated vote for the design?
You remember Jeff?
I believe it was around $700,000.
I think it was less than eight.
I'm looking for it.
But again.
This is an 80/20?
80/20, same thing. Do know that's a year ago.
Yeah.
You know, the cost of that type of project is not, is not gonna be.
But we, in those kind of projects right now, we've been seeing really good, really good prices.
A little bit, yeah, sometimes they come back, believe it or not, a little less.
Yeah, so things have changed a little bit on that side, so, plus whatever, you know, we can in kind as well on that.
One of the things that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, one of the things that I would pursue to do if you're, if you approve this resolution, so at least you get into the, meet the deadline to apply. Because just because you applied one, obviously means it doesn't mean you're gonna get it two, you're in competition with a lot of other folks. And Casey and I talked about this, should we compete, and our, our end of the day thought was, yeah, let's both have our hand in the box, see what we can accomplish. Now, to my knowledge, to my, I think my understanding is, both of us couldn't probably get this grant. When I say both of us, it's the city, but the two, the different projects of each other. So if it came down to, that's up to the committee to make that decision, but we want to make sure that we have our, our handout to ask for it, so, because if we don't ask, we won't get it.
So our 20% would become aware of the general?
General fund.
Or?
Or, so I didn't go to the Parks Commission on this to say, hey, this is, it is a park, but it's also taking in the other side of the street in front of, over in front of Osborne Agency, Skinner, and everybody else. So I didn't see fits, if you will, or the need to go to Parks and go, hey, we need you to pitch in. Tom and I talked about it a while, it's been, not recently, but is that how we settled, Tom, that this would be a general? That's what I thought.
Well, we could do something.
Street, it's more of a street project, yeah, and in kind certainly can come, well, according to them.
Well, I'm just looking at dollars.
No, I got it, so the income, I mean, the, the project is really more street oriented than it is parks. And the other thing I was gonna say, and I'm looking at Teresa because she has some business there, I would still, even if you're putting to do this and we get our name in the hat to apply. I still want to go and visit with, or have a meeting here with, with business owners on the square and say, hey, I've already talked to Mr. Skinner and a few of folks and say, hey, this is what we're looking at. And I'll give you, because it's been a while since you've seen it, I don't know if Steve's ever seen it, but this, what's, what are those places called that's strapped and you don't park there, there's a name?
The hatches.
So the hatches would become landscaped areas. And yes, to answer some of your thoughts already, probably, somebody's got to maintain that, and that was a question back when we first brought this to the. That, in my opinion, would fall on the street, probably.
Almond just completed there, and it's beautiful.
Almond is beautiful, and it is a beautification, it's, it's not necessarily to make us rich or anything else, it's beautification for our downtown area, which we believe. It'd be more vibrant than ever before, once this becomes the city streets, we'll be able to host this thing, often do things, and it's not stay high. So that's my speech or sermon, two cents, thank you. I just, you know, given, number one, I would, I would worry that more competition is out there to get us right now, I think, in Inclusive Park. I think we have a matching bunch for that, and I would hate to endorse more competition, or that they would get, get funded. And given the current trend that we just saw, you know, that 160, if our 20% do an $800,000 project, our 160,000 would have to kind of have a general. And I just worry that they're, are more important. I don't, I don't disagree, yeah, I don't disagree with you, Captain Micker, and you're not gonna hurt my feelings to say, hey, let's, let's get, try to get to Inclusive Park done, and then, or at least started, and let's look at this next year. I mean, I think it's a great thing, I think it would be great for Greenwood, but the importance, the Inclusive Park is a big deal, and that's gonna help so many kids and so many people to enjoy what they can and do it now, so. I just wondered if you have it front of you.
Yeah, I do think that this would, would really showcase downtown in Delaware what it already is, but I, I would like to see re-engineered drawings. And, and maybe get another process and see.
I think they're working on that. You made some changes to, or do we work on that, so?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't care.
We're also implementing some upgrades to the square alongside the implementation of this project.
Electrical, things like that.
Electric upgrade to the square, which is efficient, and then adding extra conduit penetrations throughout, uh, the highway and sidewalk crossings for future expansion.
So in the, so in the future, next year, whenever it may be, we apply, we do apply, that should be part of this plan, the streetscape.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so remove table?
No action.
No action.
No action.
No action. Okay, sounds good. Now, I will say, Danielle's going to be mad at me because I have her do a lot of work on it already. But the good news is the work's done and that can move on to the next, the next, uh, cycle. Yep, great cycle. Okay, uh, that was eight. Number nine is the trail, uh, tunnel, RDOT. I'm going to read you, I've had the conversation, I was at this last meeting to get, you know, I got a, I got a, uh, idea from RDOT that this could be three fifty to five, over five hundred thousand dollars for a tunnel to go on the existing trail that would go under what's already built as a road to the main street, the main street connection road. If you've been over there, it's thirteen, fifteen feet higher than the existing trail. They just went ahead and built the road over. Because we didn't have anything to tell them otherwise, and, and as it stands, if we don't do anything with this, without, I'm going to read this, this, uh, message to you. If we don't do anything about a tunnel or paying for signalization, because we would have to pay for it, any kind of signalization, this is RDOT's coming straight from RDOT. It was not in the plans for them to put it in. What the plans were, were signage, was signage. You had to make sure I understood that. So nothing more than signage would go there. I mean, they would, I'm sorry, they would bevel out, my terms, not just the trail down, from the road down to the trail on both sides.
I will say that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So they're not going to leave it like that. You don't have to climb a ladder. So that trail would be beveled up on both sides. There would be nothing more than a sign, which you can do, that, that happens around, but there'd be no signalization and we, unless we paid for it. So the cost of the tunnel, which, I'll just read it. Good morning, Mayor. I understand you're, this is from, uh, Jason Huey. Uh, I understand you are out of town for the remainder of the week. I wanted to let you know, we have completed the estimated cost of the box culvert, is what he calls it. The estimate is approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is just an estimate. It could be less or more as we negotiate prices with the contractor. If the city decides to pursue this, you can give me a call to discuss then, when you have time, or when you, when you have time to discuss it. So I've talked to him a couple of times on it. So he, I talked to him the other day to make sure nothing has changed. He said, I can't say it's two hundred and seventy-five absolutely in stone, but he reminded me that it could be less, it could be a little more. The con, I asked the contractor, I think I informed everybody last time we talked about this. I asked if we could in kind some of the work with the contractor on the job, which is Forsgren. Forsgren would not, did not want to go that route. They felt, in order for them to do it and be to standards of RDOT, which is what we would have to do at this time, they would rather not do that. They want to build it or when they're done, leave, and then we can come back and do what we want. It's a city's street. So I don't know what Jeff knows about cost. When I got this number, I was at Arkansas, I mean, miserably, when I got it, I was just showing everybody that I could find. I sent it to, I sent it to Tom, naturally first. Jeff and everybody, Sonny, everybody, I think, got a copy of it saying, I'm kind of excited about this cost. Still a lot of money, but that's cheap. And RDOT, Jason said to me, that's a good deal.
Our engineering dollars in there?
Uh, that's the cost.
That hundred of engineering dollars?
So it's, the good news is it's not us doing it. It's, it's Forsgren doing it for RDOT. So the, the really good news is it would be built to their standards, not that we couldn't do it, but it's built to their standards. I had one more question for him because it was asked by our, our Parks Director. Am I going to be looking at another tunnel or bridge over the top that I had to, uh, be concerned about water? Jason guaranteed me they would build it to not retain water. There's no creek there like we have on the other bridge.
But there's a floodplain.
There is a floodplain and there is drainage, but he said that we will build it to not hold water.
And I feel the water going to stay.
It could. It could.
So question, yes, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I know we've approved the phase two of the, of the sidewalk that we had talked about going there in front of the caboose, in order in front of the police department. Just with that, could we possibly use that, I guess, for this?
Could. You, you, we might could. We can ask the question. The only thing about, and, and I'm, I'm not against that, you know, I'm just, just me. And we've done that a couple of other times. We, we've moved some money a few times, but I will tell you, the more we don't build that sidewalk. It's going to be crazy. It, it's already, it's already not doubled, but that's a, that's a half a million dollar project plus. If you delay it, uh, it's just going to get worse. Not to mention the right of ways, the easements that we've obtained already to make, it's just in motion. I'm not saying you can't.
I just, I'm just trying to like, which, which one of these projects is more pressing?
Well.
I already have a TAP grant for the sidewalk. I don't know if that changes anything.
Yeah.
I think he was after, I was about making moving that TAP grant over to that, because it's able to be shifted, since it is kind of still a sidewalk.
RDOT did allow some, but they did not, they did not allow something. Casey had a grant, maybe a TAP grant and built hard.
Yeah, it's the one that came from the bridge.
Okay, so.
It has to pay.
Yeah, they weren't too excited about something swapping around, but I'm not saying you can't.
So my question would be, and where would we, where would we get the money?
Hey, you just saved a hundred and sixty thousand on the streetscape, if you think about that. So this would be a much better project. My response, my official response back to that email almost immediately was, for peace of mind and a more permanent solution to the safety of the citizens using that trail, I would wholeheartedly support this project, and if normal operating revenues streams or grant funding are not sufficient to pay for this change order, I would pursue an operating five-year loan to seal the deal, and that's really debt service minimal. That's a fourth of the fire region if you look at what we finance fire missions for. I said, I believe council in their current state of mind would also support this because of concern with crossing that road, the big events in the trail with the Halloween and then having to have somebody out there directing traffic while the kids are going on the curfew. Just, it makes much more sense if you're going to spend a few hundred and seventy-five thousand or less. This would be the route that I would say you'd find that.
Did you also tag, is this the, the text that you sent me that you said, by the way, I can be positive?
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't go there, but I did say.
I actually can be positive. Hunter, you have something?
Yes, the, uh, monies that we had set aside for the floodplain grant.
That's what I'm.
Are now available. That's ninety-four thousand.
We'll find that money. Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that offsets costs.
Yeah, you've got money coming from a couple of different places, and I, I just think it's a heck of a deal. I, I think in six months, if we had somebody come and give us a price, because this is RDOT dealing with Forsgren, not us putting it out for bid.
That's, the savings.
They're on site.
They're on site.
They're on site.
So we don't pay the mobilization fee.
Yeah, they had to relocate, whether it's them or somebody else.
Right, so.
So in order to get this ball rolling, what do we need to do? Just, I mean, we just need to say.
I need to tell them ASAP that we're going to do, you want to do this? They're not asking for the money yet. They will, obviously, but I need to let them know because it's, it's important that they do this pretty quick.
Yeah.
Because they've got the road built.
Yeah, they've got asphalt.
As he said to me, I don't think the asphalt's on that.
It's not on that.
No, 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 but they're. Getting there.
Yeah.
And so, he didn't tell me, hey, you got six months or two months or one day. He just said, the sooner you can tell me, the sooner we can get this in motion. Because it's a change order for them, for, for RDOT to tell them.
To save you, to save you a motion.
Oh, it's, it's you, and, and, and you will, you know, I can say the same thing to Jeremy, not Jeremy. Jason said, he said, Mayor, it's, it, he didn't say it quite like this. It's, it depends on how much safety you want.
Right.
If you want people to have to stop at the sign and read it and cross, or you want to pay. And so real quick, uh, initial glance or glimpse of a signalization, cheapest seventy thousand? The kind you walk up on Grand and push a button and it flashes. Flashes to not stop traffic, but to signal traffic with well over a hundred thousand. So, you know, that's only half, that's half of what this tunnel would be. And then you don't, I'm not saying you would never worry about anything, but they're under the road. They're not crossing a road.
So do we need to motion something to get our support?
I have to proceed? I would say so, yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion that, uh.
Don't tell him.
I'm wondering what his motion is.
Oh, oh, oh.
As we don't have a dollar now.
Yeah, so all I can get now, so I would, I would say if I tell him tomorrow, and I would, we're in it, we want to do this, he, he, at some point, he's going to come back and say it's two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars and twenty-seven cents, or it's, you know, and he was going to come back with a five hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Three fifty max.
Well, it's, no, it's estimated two seventy-five. Oh, three fifty, I'm sorry. Yeah. I thought you said.
You're like, you would eighty, right?
I heard two fifty. I could try that, but I'm, I try everything else, don't I, son?
Forty-eight.
Sir.
Forty-eight.
That's true. And they, and I think they, the whole relocate, anyway, though, I think it's a good thing to do. Because there was no money anywhere and we're having to figure out two seventy-five. I might have to rethink a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, well.
Have a motion? What was your motion?
I, my wish was to give the current cost estimate, two seventy-five, and make a motion that would support, uh, tunnel, tunneling, tunnelizing, building the tunnel under, uh.
Main street.
Main street connection.
Yes.
Lot to exceed it. Lot to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, you're saving that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I think you should.
Yes.
Don't have to.
Mr. Pedder.
Yes.
And Mr. Pedder, yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'll call Jason tomorrow and get that rolling.
While we're talking about bypass and tunnels and moving stuff, where are we at on water lines moving up? I guess I can wait. I wanted to catch Mr. Closeen before he left. Or Teresa, whoever's in charge. We can wait until we get to the apartment.
We're there.
We're there.
I was, I, I was. I was talking to a dump trucker over the Fourth of July weekend. He said they're out of money for dump trucking right now, so that's why their part's done as far as moving dirt. As far as budgeting for the whole project, so they're doing the asphalt and the steel and concrete, whatever. But anyway, he said something about, well, we're waiting for the city to move some water lines and stuff, blah, blah, blah. I just. Yeah, I was going to get a, he just hears, that's the.
No, I hear Dooler talk. So we have a meeting, go ahead.
And I just wondered what they had to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, uh, contract on site, we've got pipe on site, we're working on it, uh, obviously, uh, I think they're working on the road boards right now, because those are, we do have some easements hiding out there, you know, for acquire. But we've also got a lot of places that we can mark, that we don't need easements. I think the road crossings, uh, the problem, some, uh, challenges we're facing is that a lot of utilities, what happens when engineers plan a project, is they do an Arkansas one call, and everything gets identified, it gets marked. And then as this unfolds, utilities start scrambling and relocating their things. And even if there's plans, if you don't necessarily know the depths, and so when you start doing this, there's road corners and maybe there's some challenges there, but we're working through them, but, but it has begun. And it's going to be a process, and we're not having to hopscotch around, so, um, I wish it had been, uh, I wish we were further along than we are, obviously, but.
Put the piggyback on that, if I may. So I got a disturbing, no, nothing less than disturbing email, I believe, or in that little formal letter from Mr. Forsgren. And, uh, kind of, um, I don't know how to describe it, but it was like, what are we doing? How come we're not ready? Blah, blah, blah. I'm just paraphrasing, boy. So I immediately called, uh, a meeting with Teresa, Jared, Tim, uh, who else?
Tonya.
Uh?
Tonya.
Tonya, sure. Uh, we were in the room with Mr. Forsgren and his gentleman with him, you know.
And Jeremy.
And Jeremy Shores, and, and I was very fortunate and blessed and still thankful that everybody, this was one day, I needed it the next morning because I needed to get Mr. Forsgren an answer. Because he was kind of suggesting that maybe we were holding some things up.
More like Kevin, so you're talking about.
Yeah, Kevin. So everybody came, everybody came that I invited, and they did it the very next morning without any hesitation. And we sit in our conference room, and it kind of turned out it wasn't quite as bad as it sounded, but it sure read that way. I, I gave everybody a copy. And they informed us, they, Forsgren, and informed us that, oh, it's not so much us, little bit, to use, I think that's the term he used, a little bit, but more, uh, fiber optics was holding us up, and the, the bridge company themselves were behind, and that's something I got from RDOT later too. So that was, that was the, and by the way, Mr. Terry, when you texted me one day and said, why is there a year added onto our expected deadline? I'm like, what are you talking about?
Right.
So I drove around the square and there it was. It was ten months added.
Yeah.
To completion date, went from June, or August to twenty-sixth, to June twenty-seventh. So I started calling, called Forsgren first, uh, with the form on duty, he didn't know, which was odd. I called RDOT, started at the bottom, could have called Jared Wiley, but I thought, nah. So I started calling, and two people still didn't know. And finally got ahold, I think it was, uh, Jason still, oh, well, here, and so he said the same thing, a little bit. And I asked his point blank, is it us? Because if it's us, I need to know. And, uh, not really, it's fiber optics and it's the bridge company. So to answer your question, I went around the block here, uh, we're not holding them up, we're doing what we can do with what we have. And, uh, so it went away. Mr. Forsgren was nice and said, no problem. And I'm like, wow, okay, well, that was a meeting. I'm glad I had it, but it kind of startled me a little bit that we might be in a way, it doesn't seem to go or not. So the, the extension, you know, ten months is a reality, but as they also told me, one, one of them even said, you want me to change it back, Mayor? Well, not if it's true. I don't, I don't want to be that guy, but let's make it real. And so he said, but we probably, we might very well be changing it back as we go.
Ten months is a long time to miss the original.
Well, actually, didn't he say that they changed a bunch of?
Yeah.
Several.
Yeah, all over the state.
The same line.
They were going around, somebody was changing signs.
Yeah.
So I'm like, well, who is it? Is it Mask Marata?
Of course, our phase one sidewalk project took about eight years.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So we are okay, they're good, we're, Water, Waste, Water are doing what they need to do, uh, and things, I think it's going to be fine, uh, and, and very well may be completed. I always thought August to twenty-sixth was a great timing for November election, but anyway, that's beside the point. But, uh, it's, it's postponed for ten months now, but that'll fly by before you know it, right? And they're laying asphalt, literal.
The way they're working on the rivers, I can't see where they're.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm like, I love seeing them coming out of the ground like crazy, but he, maybe they were supposed to come out even quicker. He did say this one. He did say this one, that you see on our side of the road down here, should have been started before they started it, in fact, it was supposed to be first.
There were some general issues, I think, is what he said.
There were issues on this side of the road.
Yeah.
I'll let you leave that.
Yeah, we have that.
Maybe. So, things are working, they're inching closer and closer every day, I walked out here, they're a little bit closer to City Hall, and they're going to, as I told you before, years, years ago, when I first got a letter, Mayor, we're going to be, what was the term? Huh?
Obliterating.
Obliterating those two bridges, so I called RDOT, but it wasn't, that's, what are you talking about? Oh, they're just going to be, we're not going to blow them up, but they're going to be going. I said, okay, so, is that, yeah, we.
We did, at the very first, out by the Sturgis Park entrance, we put the slates in, Forsgren did it, we rushed that, and the slates and the pipes stopped and they got the slates in there so that they can get that far. But just some, some of the challenges of back and forth things, you know, we, we opened bids, and since the bids were higher than our estimate that we submitted to the state, our engineer has to go through and verify the bid calculations. And then, he sends it to the state for them to approve, because they, they are anticipating percentages, because some of it's not in their right of way, and then, so we can't start until they approve it, and then, they approve it, send it back to us, so that we can sign the contract. We still can't sign it until they have, we still can't start it until they have the signed contracts in their hands, and so, it goes back and forth and back and forth, and then, we lose a week here, we lose a week there, so it's challenging, and.
And we also had to do all that verification of purchasing American made.
Yeah, that, that's, that's going to take, that's a big holdup. Every. We have, I've always expect domestic materials, I'm glad you mentioned that, they call it something like, is it BABA, or what is it?
Yes.
Bi-American.
Bi-American, yeah.
I forget the, what the acronym stands for, but we've always expect domestic materials in all of our fittings, but this goes as far as every piece of rubber, every washer, every spring has to be made in America, and it has to have certification. They, it has to be in the contract, that it has to be because of state participation, so, that's holding a lot of materials, or like, six, eight weeks out. Pipe's not a problem, it's all the appearances, so that's been a challenge too. But the good thing is, we've got contractors here working, and they're, they're, uh, being aggressive, and we're just going to keep, keep looking forward.
Quick Greg Cross story, he doesn't love Greg Cross. So, years ago, when we were all talking about this, we got our bond passed, thanks to Bond Committee, or things, um, for sure, five million dollar bond that were presented, and we passed it to the vote, on the vote for vote, they did it. Greg Cross comes to me one day, he goes, you know, that's really never going to happen in our lifetime. And I said, oh, really? The very next day, Greg called, and he goes, why are there stakes in my front yard? I said, because they're fixing to come through, and he was, he, I tell that on him, because he was like, yeah, that's not going to happen. So, it's happening. And to see asphalt down there is pretty incredible, although they're laying it on dirt, but I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I don't know what's going on, they, they seem to know what they're doing, so. That answer your question?
Hopefully, it's better asphalt than crap.
All right, anybody got a question for directors that are here?
Yeah, uh, so I read an article, uh, West Mile, you know, they're building this new emergency response center there, of course, may, what, what is going to be our responsibility?
They're not paying us, you know.
I assume the price tag, somebody's fixing to pay something.
Well, right now, y'all know we pay roughly, I think, I think the number, top man, I think the number's twenty-six thousand we pay into, uh, to the sheriff's office to utilize their dispatch center. That will be going to Fort Smith, uh, it'll be a separate division, uh, and that's the way the law is, unified dispatch, so we knew it was coming, we didn't, it was supposed to have been done years ago, uh, which is now coming online, so there will be a cost. I talked to Mr. Martin, uh, he's, he expects our price actually to drop, uh, and he, he doesn't know the exact figure, but he thinks it's going to drop. All the good, the good news is, the mayor and I and the fire chief, we went to meet, we won't have to buy any additional software, no computers, all of our stuff will work with their system. And he's, he's excited, and he actually convinced me that this may be, I wasn't weary about it, because I was scared about the cost. It may drop significantly for us, uh, I don't know what that price is going to be, but, you know, each city is going to have to pay in, and it's going to be based on your population, so. And, but the, the Fort Smith got a grant, the mayor might have to help them, but Fort Smith got the grant, so a lot of that startup money is going to come from Fort Smith.
And, and the county.
And the county.
Oh, so the dispatch, I must have misheard you, that dispatch job is not going with the city of Fort Smith, or combining with the county?
It's a total entity. The, the county has basically allowed Fort Smith, the way I, the way I understand it is, the county has allowed Fort Smith to be the lead agency on it, and Fort Smith, it won't be under the Fort Smith Police Department, it'll be a call agency, uh, I can't remember what it's called.
River Valley, something communication.
So that I'm on, I can't hear right off the top of my head.
Well, that's what, that's what it came from, so not a lot of county. Well, it's, it's.
There's more, if I may.
Yeah.
The nine-one-one board, which has a name, is, uh, now you got me sidetracked with the Bible, I said, I can't take my eyes off of it. So, the nine-one-one board, I, I got appointed by the judge, asked to serve, and I said, absolutely, so my job on there is to, to monitor, to vote, along with all the other board members, ADOs. And so, it is made up. More, there's less Fort Smith personnel on the board than there is county and myself, so we have a, uh, nobody's going to run over anybody on it, if that makes sense. We have a say-so, my responsibility on there is to, all the other towns in South Sebastian County, that don't have a seat on there, to, to find out how much it's going to cost Hartford, or Huntington, and Nashville, that don't have it much like we did. So, average to them can be tough, so I constantly ask, and I did it at the last meeting, I said, this is five million dollar building, plus five million dollar to, to, uh, fit it, outfit it, give or take. So, and I don't even know, I can't remember if that was included in the tower or not, uh, so we've gone all through the design, it's in the H G, they're, they come and do, there's another meeting, we have a month, a monthly meeting. And so, my job is to represent those other towns too, so I can stand up for them, you know, they can't, the, the West Mile has just recently been appointed, we voted him on as the director, and he's not missing around. And so, he's even trying to, uh, investigate not the cost of the building so much, although we kept that too, it was higher.
Supposedly a four-hail.
Yeah, yeah, so the hardened, the hardened part of it.
It wastes all the essential.
So, they're taking the old Whole Hog barbecue place, that.
I'll be on the burrow.
Yes, so that property, that, that building will remain there, and that, the front, out of the front, they're building the hardened building for the nine-one-one communication, that's in the front. And they will attach that building to the old, the restaurant, and that will be offices, uh, locker rooms, so they're utilizing an existing building, because otherwise, that would probably take many dollars. And then the towers right beside it, parking lot and all that stuff, so, sorry to interrupt.
And the fire dispatchers will be right there, police dispatchers off of our place.
It seems to be really, and the judge is the chair of this committee, uh, so everybody's got some say-so, and you've got, I can't remember.
We spoke about the priority calls.
Yeah.
And, uh, that was a big question, it's like, hey, is Fort Smith going to take priority, no, it's going to come out of priority list, and they're going to dispatch it by priority levels, and whether you're in Hartford, Greenwood, Lebaka, or, or what, or not.
Not a huge number, but the very first meeting that we had, and the, and the cost estimate, I'll, I'll be safe, of the building, the judge, as they already approved by the court court, and he, he read a piece of paper, written it, four hundred, real there, I don't think y'all made that many, that's four, four hundred thousand dollars, but the county's, okay, here, here's this, we already, we got this budget, which is, you know, not a million dollars, but it's a lot, a lot of, I was like, wow. I didn't, I've never seen them act that, that quickly, but it's been worked for so long, so.
This, this is a law that they have to, they have to, by, by, Crumford County has already switched over, most of the Northwest, Arkansas, uh, agencies up there have switched over, uh, I'm excited about that, it could be a, it could be a good bossing for us in that.
Well, they definitely will speed it up, and I'm having to transfer calls to somebody else, I think it goes to one central location, and they can dispatch from there, I think it's going to speed it up for the smallest time. And Wes was already, he's already active, or he has already, so, can't remember who it was, that gave a quote on the soft, or, uh, was it the software?
It's, it's a software, I can't remember the name of it, it's a.
Phoenix.
Phoenix software.
Yeah.
Yeah, Phoenix pad.
And he goes, by no means are we just going to take that and not get another quote, he's, he's working hard, getting, getting things manageable, money-wise.
And, and that initial cost of installing that software on our computers, they will take, so it shouldn't cost us any money to get started. But we will have a reoccurring yearly fee, uh, what I, what I anticipate is, we still have, not a business, and I hate to say it on the video, but I anticipate the county still charging us a fee, the, you know, officer, you know, fees and processing fees and stuff like that.
I just didn't want to get a sticker shot, and here's new building, here's new process, here's the, here's the new.
It's new build, yeah.
I asked, I asked every meeting, and they, they're sitting there waiting, looking at me, what do you got there?
He said, he says he thinks he anticipates it going down, so I'm hopeful for it.
Basically, just quoting a lot of values and costs on, in that article, I was like, oh, somebody's going to pay for this.
Yeah, he's, he's very, well, they got that grant, I mean, a huge, I don't know what the money is.
I can't remember, no.
It's, it's five million plus grant to, to get it started.
And I asked, I, they'd already asked it, I asked it one more time, I said, so are we due to the, they talk radios, half in the meeting, well, I don't have a clue what you're talking about, but these guys do, and I said, into that discussion, because everybody in the board is, works in that arena. Sheriff, the, the emergency service people, and I said, so are we going to have to buy, okay, I might have made a little joke about Chief Brian, I said, I got a guy that wants to buy radios every year, and I told the sheriff that, but I said, is that really what we're going to be looking at? And he answered, no. What you have is already compatible, you know, that's.
Radio system isn't changing.
Yeah, you don't have to go out and buy it.
Right, right now, the police department's paying a fee for police and fire, and it's okay, it's, it's all kind of taxpayer, but they will split that up, so it might go down for me, but he will have a cost that he'll have to incur on his side. So, it might, thinking of it that way, it might be a wash, it might be cheaper for me, but now he adds a cost to his end.
We will have to buy radio.
Right, yes, sir. Any other questions?
No.
Yes, sir.
Good, good. The only question I had was, uh, where are we at on the turning lane, about how long you're over that one? So, yeah, the question I asked Jason today, while I had him, I called him about other issues about the curb, we had a meeting with, productive meeting with Jacob Burton, Cheryl Warner, on the curb, with Sonny and Hunter, and while we were in there, I was going, I said, this is how I'd like to do it, we'll just call them right now, so they had questions on the turning lane, if you get into that. That project, and so, I called Jason, and he gave me some advice, and said he'd look into it, I said, well, I have you on the phone, uh, I know you gave me a price on the tunnel, but I don't have anything, numbers on the turn lane, and he said, get it to you soon as we get it completed, so I don't, I don't have a number, but. He's been working on it. Been working on it, yeah.
Yeah.
Tell me all about it. Yeah. Everybody seems like a good idea, or they see it being a good idea, but we'll have, I don't know what that number is.
It was a good idea about seven years ago, we were up, and it was about three hundred grand.
I agree.
I can't remember which. This project we dumped that money off on, were necessary, is it?
Well, you're talking about also the, the old road, why the road too, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, oh, oh.
You're talking about the turn lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, turn.
Yeah, I was talking about up in the harbor.
Oh, you're talking about.
I turned it up in the harbor.
That, that was a million and a half.
Good lock.
Yeah, that was a million and a half.
Not originally, it was about a million and a half, so.
Okay, it was a lot, but anyway, you're right, we did the, uh, but the turn lane, I have no clue what he said. That's all I had. Anybody else? Uh, council forum, kind of same thing? Anything?
Well, I do appreciate the, I did eat a lot of questions about the Freedom Fest, and why it wouldn't go on the morning, and I said I didn't have any idea, and somebody asked me, well, they heard that the council cut a bunch of money for the Freedom Fest people, I said, well, I have not heard that one, I mean, I miss a meeting every now and then, but I, I, I would hate that that rumor got out, or, but, from a Sonic side of the deal, we appreciate, if we're only gaining town, we may have a big sales on Monday morning, if we can go anywhere.
Well, it looks successful.
Yeah.
I noticed moving rock on your, your building project.
Yeah, we got this little peasant guy that's wobbling us a lot, works for the city.
Building inspector, yeah.
I like that picture you posted.
Yes, sir, and you, the race, we're talking about the race.
To ten point, we've set another all-time record with registration on our race, and four, four hundred runners registered for it, and that's a good sign, as we talk about economy, because that's discretionary money. Now, one other point about economy, discretionary money, my son has fireworks stand, at that, for, starting anyway, nine years old, now he owns it, he had a tremendous year. That's a good sign for where the economy is trying to go, because when money's tight, people tend not to set fire to it.
In this area?
You're referring.
I don't make sure you pay the fire chief.
Yeah, so, another, this is, I'll just make a cut a link, what, at twenty-five?
Early scene?
It's twenty-five or six. No, it's, yeah.
Or that, yes.
It's about five hundred.
Yes, it's a lot.
I haven't talked to my, my, my son's in-laws that own, that run Jake's out there, but I think they have banner here too, which is outside of the city, but, not by their chief, but. So, there was a lot of, I don't want to talk, in case he's not here, we talked about the, the festival a lot this morning, but without him being there, which is not unfair, I don't guess, we didn't talk bad about him, but, uh, a- as I said today, I'm staying publicly again, but. From the time it officially started till officially ended, it, it, it was seamless, it was great, the crowd was good, do I miss the old age? Absolutely, but that's me, I'm old, old school, and, and he, you know, that can be worked on, changed, adjusted, but the race was a huge success, sounds like the pancake breakfast was, the festival as it was, was a huge success. Did you enjoy the fireworks at all, that saw it? We added some to that this year, uh, so I think it was above and beyond, if you will. Anything else?
Yeah, I was like, I asked Jeff when he's going to turn on some of the streets, that's been a question, they, numerous people ask, this out here will start next, no, the fifteenth.
State day, right?
The state day green out here will start then.
And you know where that goes, down to, with Dan Bell, turn, turn on the, then, all the way to the Joan, or, to Joan Street, it's resurfaced.
Yeah, we had our kickoff meeting about two weeks ago, and that's the time, the time that they gave us.
And we, we, I'm sorry, we, he, we addressed he, the issue you called me about, the, the issue, working out the details.
First street.
Exactly. We're going to.
Yeah, okay, and there's a pothole out there, uh, on Denver, where you come off the light to get center, there's a pothole right there, that's the stop light. At the center of Denver. At the stop light, right as you turn up there by the, uh. Trip classes, or, yes, the, the bank, on the other side? Center, right by center, center cut line.
That's same.
The bit during.
On Center Street or Denver?
Yeah, right through the end of Denver and into stop. Okay, I'm. Right as you turn, to head back to center.
Now, who's in charge of that one out there at the stop light at seventy-one Denver?
That's, um, Ford.
Yeah, we, so, I haven't been out there in a long time, holy cow. Yeah, you get in there, it's a shock.
Especially when you're trying to beat the light.
Yeah, so, I communication. Yeah, so my communication, my, my communication, you get that on record.
There for, that's what we put.
Hey, he's doing, trying to tell you, slow down at the stop.
So my, my communication with Forsgren is on that, that he's aware of it. He will, his promise to me was, I'll keep it as best I can, but I'm not gonna fix it.
You can't put a, no, look at this one again.
Until, until.
Yeah, sure.
Looking for a truck out of there.
But I was shocked myself. I don't go that, very often. I was over there going, okay.
Well, if that traffic signal worked right, but if you don't make it, if you catch the red, you sit there for thirty minutes. Whether there's a car anywhere else in the world.
It's mad.
Oh, right?
I would recommend slowing down, it's steep up, just to slow.
It's hard to speed crater.
Yeah, it is.
It's like. Without, like the moon surface.
But once, once they're done, we'll fix it back better than.
Well, I'm sure they will.
Look, I mean, they, when you first did it, it was so bad.
Oh, it was rude.
They get out there, you know, rolling it out till they, yeah.
I will say, it's bad again, though.
I, I saw yesterday.
Yeah, it's bad again.
I don't know the way.
That's why.
Yeah, they just walk with things.
Yeah, try to beat the.
Because the heat is. That's right. Yeah, that's what it gets worse from that stuff heats up.
Well, then when you get a bunch of rain and stuff and you get water in there and it just.
It's done.
Yeah. Did they take care of your light here, Dakota? They ain't take care of none of my sticky lights. Shut up.
On a happy note.
It gets bleak here in May on the Fourth of July. I praise the Lord, driving through there.
You can take the cheese.
It is bleak.
Hey, on a happy note, I have heard that Veterans Way is open now.
Yes, it is.
Prepare yourselves. Veterans Way is the new cut through from Westwood to Wal-Mart.
Oh, yeah.
It only took, it only took us five years to open a two hundred yard road, give or take, and a lot of stuff. It is open. We are gonna go back at them. I'm sorry.
Did you cut more trees for them?
No, no, no. Trees are good. Everything's good. It's got one stop sign that, that stops you on Veterans Way until when you get onto Liberty.
Westwood.
Westwood, sorry.
There's one on each end.
On the other end.
Yeah.
After discussions, after a long thought process and discussions with the school, we are also going to stop traffic.
Or like that.
Three-way. It'll be a three-way stop.
Be a three-way stop.
Which will meet, as you know, a lot of stuff, but we're gonna do it and we're gonna go out there. And when Jeff gets the signs up, we're gonna go do a little video and, and to tell the public why we're doing it and get them mentally prepared to, and, and so we believe that that's what, and school is, is all in, that this is what this needs to do for, to allow people to turn on both roads, get out.
If you're coming out of the school, they wanna go toward Wal-Mart, that's absolutely what you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because you don't work on the big block.
Yes.
Probably not so much to let everybody in.
And then, yeah, moving, they're all lining up. David Parker right there in the center.
So we'll be in explorers.
Have they ever been out here in the mornings at ninety-six?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. And speaking of kind.
Go, 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 go.
They let, one at a time. It's amazing, uh, people later.
I've said many times, somebody, some news, he's come in there and video that and tell you how.
It gets so smooth and it's amazing. And then there'll be a traffic signal there in a couple years.
It's surreal.
All the candidates will go ahead.
It's already beginning to, those.
Oh, yeah, I know. Trust me. Won't there be worse gridlock than it already is?
What he was put, what he put around about there.
I tried to ask.
You say the, did you say the story on this other day about the number of roundabouts that are going in?
Yeah.
And how they kept that one accident.
Absolutely.
Well, in, in serious accuracy.
Because stopping is this, and where everybody's roundabout is kinda.
This is my anti-bull. He just hit the front corner panel, it's not a, a turntable.
There's no line to try to meet when it's roundabout.
He's gotta get the guy aside. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with your.
Say, thank you all very much. Good, good meeting.
Roundabout.
I'll get used to them. I'll be in the comments.
Love them. Oh, yeah. I'll take them there and be in them for a minute. Be a quick round.